I'll call the May 15, 2017, regular council meeting to order and ask those in the audience who'd like to join the council and myself in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first two items under special business, Agenda Bill 7428, a proclamation announcing National Prevention Week, and Agenda Bill 7432, Affordable Housing Week. And so... Pat, come on, come on down. Hi, how you doing this evening? This is a proclamation, whereas substance abuse and mental health problems affect all communities nationwide, whereas through National Prevention Week, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health problems and substance abuse. Equally important, community members of all walks of life learn what they can do to help prevent these problems before they start. We all have a role to play in keeping the people around us and ourselves healthy and safe. And now therefore I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 14 through 2017 to be National Prevention Week in the City of Issaquah and call upon our community to observe this week with compelling programs and events that support this year's theme, Making Every Day Count. And witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah on this 15th day of May 2017. So Pat, this is recognition and a small appreciation for all of the work that you do in helping us in that endeavor, and I would be delighted if you have a few words to share with those in the audience or watching on TV.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Butler, council members, guests, and the audience. On behalf of the Issaquah Schools Foundation, Healthy Youth Initiative, and Influence the Choice Drug Prevention Alliance for Youth, thank you. For the third year in a row, your city council has passed a proclamation in recognition of National Prevention Week. National Prevention Week is celebrated and recognized by communities across the nation striving to increase public awareness and promoting substance abuse prevention and mental health. Tonight, I would also like to let you know about some specific actions that we are taking in our community around the issue of substance abuse prevention and mental health. Under the umbrella of the Healthy Youth Initiative and partnership and in lead with the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board, three state-of-mind conferences have been organized this year. The conference was attended by over 225 people, with the largest participation at the last conference at Issaquah High School. With a grant through the Issaquah Arts Commission, the alliance received funding to help support its fifth annual video contest to commemorate its fifth year, a contest for middle and high school students. We received over 62 submissions and just last week gave out over 22 cash prizes, nine from Issaquah High School and one from Issaquah Middle School, who just happened to be the overall middle school winner. We initiated this year a parent campaign called It's Up to You to encourage parents to talk with their youth about their boundaries and expectations around no drugs or alcohol. Thanks to the City of Issaquah communication staff helping us, we got the message out far and wide across the community. And finally, here are a number of events that you may be interested in attending. On June 1 at Holiday Inn, which we will promote and get invitations to all of you, under the title of Action Forum for Youth, Healthy Youth Initiative, and the Issaquah School District will reveal the results of the 2016 Healthy Youth Survey. A similar event will be held in Semamish on June 6. As an effort to further educate community on opioid, on the opioid health crisis, and we are helping to assist in organizing a June event, it's June 14 from 2 to 4, Old Redmond Schoolhouse, to act, to bring to the awareness of this increasing crisis in our communities. This year, National Prevention Week's theme, as Fred said, Make Each Day Count, really speaks to our ongoing efforts every day to work with our partners, such as the City of Issaquah, to keep our young people mentally healthy, safe, and drug-free. For that, we thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
The next proclamation I have is one that talks about affordable housing, and I'd ask Elizabeth Maupin, and is Megan Aldmore here also? Elizabeth, come on down.
Thank you.
Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity, studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs, suburbs and rural areas. Whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employees, and communities as a whole. Now therefore I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 22, 2017, to be Affordable Housing Week. In the City of Issaquah, I endorse the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so, recommit to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and that all people in it live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. And witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 15th day of May 2017. Now, what I suspect most people know, but a few may not, I'm speaking to the choir right now, because you have invested a lot of your personal time, your effort, trying to get the message out and doing everything that you can do to meet what's in this proclamation. So Elizabeth?
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you very, very much.
And I'm very, very pleased to see the city doing this, saying this, and I hope lots of you will get to some of the events in Affordable Housing Week and learn more about ways that we can make and keep housing affordable so my friends can stay in Issaquah. Thank you.
Well, Elizabeth, there's that, and again, thank you very, very much for all you do.
Thank you. (applause)
Our next item is audience comments, a few comments about those. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics should do so at this time. I will point out that there are joint public hearings scheduled after the consent calendar, and those two agenda bills are the ninth major amendment to the Issaquah Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement and the second, the first amendment to the Washington State Department of Transportation Park Point TDR Development Agreement and Development Agreement with Polygon Northwest. So, for those speaking this evening, please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an opportunity to include your email address on the sign-in sheet, you may leave that information on the clipboard at the front table after speaking. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and any relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Submit any written comments to the city clerk. Visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When it turns yellow, you are within the last minute of your comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted time. Please refrain from personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
Yes, Joshua Share.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members in the gallery, and members of the viewing public. My name is Joshua Share. My office address is 13555 Southeast 36th Street, Suite 300 in Bellevue. I have three items to discuss with you this evening, two are neighborhood-related, one is a little broader. I don't have any scripted remarks or amazing oratory for you, I just jotted down some bullet points. I didn't even put on a suit for you tonight. What I have to tell you is sincere, it's heartfelt, it's somewhat informal, but I want to start with a significant issue for the Talis neighborhood. As a resident of that neighborhood, and I've been there now for a little over four years, and the first thing I want to talk about is the road from the Bergsman property up to Harvey Manning Park at Talis. And that, that road is just, it's a bad idea if you're thinking about making it an arterial. It's, it's just not, it doesn't make any sense. And frankly, I don't really know who's asking for it to be done that way. Potentially, I guess, it would increase the developer's value of the Bergsman parcel, but it's certainly not going to help anybody who lives there in terms of ingress and egress to go all the way up into our neighborhood. What I'm afraid is going to happen, and I think a lot of residents in the neighborhood are afraid is going to happen, is it's going to be used as a pass-through to beat traffic on 900. And you might say, well, it'll take a really long time, we'll put in a lot of speed bumps, you know? You could put in a speed bump every five feet up that windy road that might get built, and it's still going to be faster than sitting on 900 to go up and then back down Talis Drive to beat that congestion. 5:45 this evening, I don't even want to tell you how long it took me to get from the freeway down to Talis Drive, it's just absurd. It's, it's F-minus-minus on the concurrency matrix. So adding a road up there is just going to encourage cut-through traffic, and it's a bad idea. If you want to do emergency access with bollards and you can get the developer to pay for that 100%, go for it. That's totally fine. More emergency access is a great idea, but not using it as an arterial. You know, there's portions of that road that are going to be steeper than Talis Drive, which is, I think, 10 or 11%, and there's portions of that. I was told back in 2008 by Public Works Engineering that building that road up behind the park would be not feasible from an engineering perspective. So it's just shocking to hear that it's even being considered today. And if no one's going to use it as an arterial because you're trying to slow everybody down and not get up there, then why even build it in the first place? It just doesn't make sense. The second issue is in Talis, on Shangri-La, we've got the giant tarp, the Tarp Hill, or Mount Doom, as you might have heard me refer to it as. And, you know, that's where the slide happened a couple of years ago, the very minor slide. But it's still a giant tarp, and it looks horrible. It's ridiculous that we still have this tarp there. And you've got this booster pump station sitting there as well, next to the park on Shangri-La, and I don't know why it's blinking how many minutes that is, two, three? This is new.[930.63][930.63](laughter) You know, if you had a booster pump station sitting there with a covering on it on Gilman Boulevard, you'd be doing something about it pretty quickly. But it's out of sight, it's out of mind, it's up in Shangri-La, nobody sees it. It's absurd. We're getting into the summer, kids are going to be playing there, put the thing in the ground already, please. It's, it's just ridiculous to be sitting out there next to the park, next to this giant white tarp on the hill. Re-vegetate the hillside or build the houses, but something needs to be done. Then, the final thing is just some general comments on vision. You know, a year and a half ago, I said in December of 2015 that I encouraged you to be innovators. And I'm sure that you may have felt that a lot of good things have been done over the last year and a half, but I haven't seen a lot of positive change around the community. In fact, in some ways, I've seen us going backwards. I see Styrofoam starting to show up at food establishments. I see traffic not getting any better. And I brought with me, and I know my time is waning, but I can show anybody later, you know, 2008, I-90 corridor study, 2009, overcrossing 12th Avenue. Here we are, eight, nine, 10 years later, 2013, report to the Transportation Committee on concurrency. Your projects for 2030 Action Model Run One included the overcrossing. We are now like 25% into the timeline for getting this done to meet that model, and no steps have been taken. It's absurd. You know, you're not going to wake up one day in 2030 and there's going to be this beautiful road with direct-access ramps. You're not going to wake up one day in 2030 and have this beautiful mixed-use development on the valley floor. You've got to start taking action and steps to get to the end of the plan. You know, Will Rogers once said, "You can be on the right track, but you'll get run over if you just stand there." It's time to act. Thank you very much. That went a lot quicker than I thought it would. I'm going to stick around for the State of the Judiciary, though.
Thank you for, council member, Joshua Share.
Susan Haas.
Oops, good evening. I'm going to set up something fancy here. Whoops. PowerPoint. Okay, slide show from beginning. Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, council and others. My name is Susan Haas, and I live at 19524 Southeast 24th Place in Semamish. And I live, that is actually quite near Issaquah, and also pretty near Providence Heights. And I have a great honor tonight of showing you a few pictures, not a lot. It's a very short presentation, and I also sent these to you as an email before. This presentation was prepared by Steve Christensen. And basically, I wanted to show you these pictures because one thing that Catholics are really good at is finding wonderful places and creating seclusion there, a place that's so special, and you have to stumble upon it sometimes. And that's what the Catholics did in 1961, especially for women, to have a college. And this shows you the centerpiece of the college. On the top picture, it's the chapel, and then you can see the pointy windows at the top. Those are stained glass windows that were crafted by Gabriel Loire, by making something like a mosaic, like taking really thick pieces of glass and arranging them and then pouring molten cement around them. So you can see how it's sort of like a mosaic, and then it all dried over a day or so or longer. And then the bottom is one of these pictures taken by Michael Slatick or Slatic. He's taken a lot of pictures in the windows, and you can just see these rich colors coming through and even reflecting off of the surface of the wall there. These images of Christian stories from the Bible, and these deep colors he used, like the blues and the reds and the yellows, and some white, too. And the light comes through, and everybody who's ever been in this chapel just, yeah, they just love these windows. People all over the world love windows like this that he made. He was very prolific, and his family is still making these windows in France. And this picture shows you this kind of like peek-a-boo view of this wonderful bucolic place. You can see how high it is and the views, seeing all these mountains with the snowcaps. And this is the campus, it's all from 1961, big, big, bright windows, lots of greenery. The greenery is what first attracted me because I went to the Y there and went swimming and went to this like event with kids making smores at a fire pit, and they were really having fun. So, so in the center here is the chapel. Whoops, right here. There's the chapel, and you can see all these windows. So. So it's like the most sacred space in the place is nestled in the middle of all these living spaces and, you know, cafeteria and swimming pool and, you know, for a lot of nuns in '61, it's fascinating that there are all these sports facilities, too, ballfields and... I mean, nuns must have had a great time there, just losing that inhibition sometimes of having the habit on. And then finally, here's a picture of, a very early picture of the sisters. And especially, you can see a lot of them on the right and a couple of them on the left wearing their crucifixes and being outside and just enjoying that wonderful place in Issaquah. You can see the windows in the background and how tall they are, they're massive, and in front of the two nuns on the left, and those nuns are really smiling for a great reason. They have a very special place. So, thank you very much. I'm going to give the paper to Tisha, which Steve printed out of, of these pictures. And I'll flip through them once more since I'm not on the red yet.[1371.14][1371.14](laughter) So, you can see just the scale and just the majesty of the architecture. Whoops. Thank you.
Susan, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Back to the fancy.
David Wagner.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's David Wagner, and I'm 360 Northwest Dogwood Street, apartment K204, Issaquah, Washington. First thing I want to do, since this is the last council meeting before Memorial Day, is to invite not only the council and the audience, but residents of Issaquah through the TV to come to our service, which will be at 10:00 in the morning on Memorial Day. Hopefully, this rain will finish and we will have some wonderful weather for that service. If it's nice weather, it'll be in the cemetery, Lower Hillside Cemetery, at 515 West Sunset Way. If it's inclement weather, we'll be in the senior center. And that's a big deal for me this year because I haven't been on sabbatical from the senior center for a couple of years. One other thing, I told the mayor that I am here for a purpose, and that purpose is a brand-new law that was signed into law on April 20 by Governor Inslee. So you'll see a flag called the POW MIA flag for all the POWs and MIAs. In 1971, the National League of Families recognized the need for a symbol of our POW MIAs. Following league approval, the flags were manufactured and distributed. March 9, 1989, an official league flag, which flew over the White House in 1988 National POW Recognition Day, was installed in the U.S. Capitol Rotunda and as a result of legislation passed overwhelmingly during the 100th Congress. In the United States, National POW Recognition Day is observed on the third Friday of September. It honors those who were prisoners of war and those who are still missing in action. This day was established by an act of Congress by the passage of Section 1082 of the 1998 Defense Authorization Act. You're going to wonder how this applies to the city. Our city has a total of seven MIAs listed on a monument right across the street. Monument on Veterans Memorial Field. However, this monument does not list them as MIAs, it simply lists them serving their country. Most of those service members were lost at sea in World War II, or some of them were lost in air crashes in World War II in Vietnam. On April 20 of this year, Governor Jay Inslee signed House Bill, Senate Bill 1204 into law. Here's the wording of that law. "Each public entity must display the National League of Families POW MIA flag along with the flag of the United States and the flag of the state upon or near the principal building of the public entity." There are 10 days, I'm not going to read them all, that that flag is to fly. RVFW posts hereby volunteers to partner with the City of Issaquah and present these flags as a gift of service and sacrifice to this nation and this community. I am requesting today, the council and the mayor of the City of Issaquah, consider this request of partnering with us, and we will provide the flags at no cost to the city. This request to fly the official prisoner-of-war flag on those 10 days, as noted by state law, to honor those still missing in action, and I look forward to your response to this request. I am, as always, available to work with the city to make this happen. Thank you for your time, and I finished before the red light went off.
Dave, thank you very, very much, and thank you very, very much for that offer.
Greg Morris.
I'm here, I think I signed up.
Okay. Then we have Paula Harper-Christensen.
My name's Paula Harper-Christensen, 23416 Southeast 17th Place, Semamish, walking distance to Providence Heights Chapel. And I have walked there many times over the last 30 years that we've lived in our home. We moved here to be in the country, and we've watched it, just as you have, grow up around us. And in many ways, watching the growth of our beautiful area, it has been a joy to observe the progress and the people forming a more diverse community filled with cultures, languages, traditions, and many faiths. My family was fortunate to worship for 12 years in the lovely Providence Heights Chapel. My church is Spirit of Peace United Church of Christ, and we rented space from the Lutheran Bible Institute and from Trinity Lutheran College until it was purchased by City Church, and then we had to go someplace else. In fact, my daughter was married in that beautiful... In fact, my daughter was married in that beautiful chapel, and because of my many years on that camp- campus and my children's involvement in the YMCA program for countless years, I know that property and those buildings really well. In fact, there's a bomb shelter, because it was built in the 60s, in the basement of that church. So, by profession, I am a child development specialist and I'm a teacher. And knowing that there are some nice, usable classrooms that are empty, boarded off and empty, is very unsettling for this old teacher. Issaquah and Samamish, we have a very rich history. In 1860, the area was called Squawk Valley, then later incorporated as Gilman in 1892. And in 1900, the area was called, started to be called Issaquah because of the native word, uh, "Isqal." I hope I said that close. Say it.
Isqal.
Isqal, which means "sound of water bird." Issaquah continued to preserve the history, as exemplified by the buildings you just have to drive down Front Street or stroll through Gilman Village and visit the old jail, the XXX drive-through, the railroad buildings, and many others. We have been named a top place to live in America in multiple publications. You know them as well as I do. Forbes Magazine, Money Magazine, um, uh, Seattle Metropolitan Magazine, and there've been a number of them, so we, you know, we feel a lot of pride in our community. Our community in these magazines has been described as peaceful, serene, rich in history, full of wildlife, which we had a bear on our back patio last week, low in crime, and a, as a forested retreat. That's how Issaquah in the Samamish Plateau have been described. Forested retreat. If we wish to continue to be serene with a rich history, we need to maintain Providence Heights as a historic site and to find ways that we can share this rare gem. It is possible to get creative and come up with ways to use the property and the buildings for, let's say, concerts in the acoustically sound chapel with an old pipe organ in it, which last time I was in there, it still worked. Conference Retreat Center, school, shelter for women in crisis, museum, jazz festivals, Issaquah Film Festival. Imagine that. Hey, even Ellensburg has its own film festival. Park, year-long Shakespeare Theater. And all the while, we could be generating revenue for the City of Issaquah. The possibilities are endless. Can I finish?
Summarize.
Okay, I'll summarize. We owe it to the residents to teach them the history. The new residents, the background of the area, the buildings and the windows belong together. The Sisters of Providence built it on that site to have a serene place for education and for worship.
Thank you, Paula.
You are welcome.
Peter Kim?
Question, Lee, I'm here to speak about Central Pad Park. Is there gonna be comment at that time?
Uh, no, that would be the time.
All right. Very well. If I could, I could take that call. Could you please, Paul?
She's following you. She's right there beside you, so.
Thank you very much.
Please introduce yourselves.
Yeah, yes, sir. Mayor Butler, City Council. Uh, my name is Peter Kim. Uh, I'm a resident of the Issaquah Highlands at 1628 24th Avenue Northeast. I'm also a parent of two children, play with the Issaquah Soccer Club and a parent who's involved with the kids' activities. I'm here to speak with regard to, um, the Central Pad, uh, Park Pad and, and the committee that spoke or acted on it, or I believe is gonna give recommendations today to the council. Uh, as a parent, I, I implore the council to, to consider approving the Central Pad Park improvements, uh, pad improvements. Um, you know, watching and, and having my kids play and not having the space to play is, is a real problem. And, you know, the younger kids and with field availability, it's getting later and later in the evening because of field availability and, and with more, uh, youth organizations, sports organizations having need, um, for fields, uh, we're just at a crisis point in terms of being able to, to allow our kids, our youth, to safely play. I also happen to be a resident, um, of the Issaquah Highlands, just east of, of Central Park, and so I'm vested in, um, the development from that angle as well. Uh, and I know our community is, is keen on, um, trying to minimize the disruption to our community, including the light pollution. And so I implore the city to consider, um, the LED, LED lighting, uh, improvement as well as the traffic safety and widening, uh, of the road and park. Um, and then, you know, as, as it regards to other issues, I know, again, I really hope that the, the council approves the park, but I know there's gonna be more traffic as well. Um, and so considering a light or some sort of, um, street improvement at the park entrance, I think is gonna be a must, too, eventually. Um, finally, before I see time to my colleague, um, I, you know, I'm also very interested in, in what the, the, the city has in plan for the development of Lakes, uh, uh, Lakes Samamish State Park and use, utilizing and improving that space as well. To, this need for, uh, fields is, is not gonna diminish with all the kids and families we have in, um, in our community. And so I hope the city takes some visionary action to move forward with the Central Park pad development and something for LSP eventually.
Thank you, Peter. My name is Gina Tyletke, and I am here as a resident of Issaquah in the South Cove Area, 18826 Southeast 42nd Street. And, uh, not only here as a resident, but also as a taxpayer, a parent, and I'm here representing the Issaquah Soccer Club, um, uh, gunners. And as well as that, uh, I am here advocating and representing the youth of Issaquah. And this is more than just about a sports field or a lighted turf field, and I want to take a step back for just a second and talk about the big picture. I think the council has done a fine job. We're talking about, you know, the seniors center, we're talking about preserving open spaces, we're talking about pros, we're talking about some very significant things. But if you take a step back and think about the youth of Issaquah, if sports and places to play provide one, one child, you know, to keep them from going awry, this is a win. And we can tell you, as we're representing over 2,500 families with Issaquah Soccer Club alone, not to mention football and baseball, we can tell you that we are, we are helping, we're one cog in the great wheel of a child's development. If, and again, if we can prevent one or two or 10 or five or hundreds, it's, it's just so much more important than just talking about a lighted turf field. And we do need those improvements like the road and, and LED lighting for the residents of Issaquah. But I just wanted to take a step back. Thank you for trying to do your best with regard to seniors, the veterans, you know, the, the transportation, the streets. But again, it all comes back to, in order for us to have a really great community, we have got to pay attention to these youth, and we're doing a lot of programs that can, a lot of programs that, that do help with that, but these lighted sports fields are, again, a very important cog in the wheel in terms of health and wellness, uh, productivity, teamwork, all those things that lead to very strong, productive adults. We're on third base, council. Let's bring it home tonight. Thank you.
Peter and Gina, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm Elizabeth Mopin, um, resident of Issaquah, coordinate the Issaquah-Samamish Interfaith Coalition, serve on the Human Services Commission. I'm here tonight, um, to speak to something that relates to Affordable Housing Week and also to Providence Heights. The Greeks who invented democracy believed that the one purpose of government is to improve the lives of the citizens, not just some citizens, but all citizens. Serving the common good means making sure that no one's personal self-interest is put ahead of the good of society at large. Sometimes, we undermine our ability to serve the common good through laws placing the desires of individual property owners above the needs of the community as a whole. The Providence Heights determination of nonsignificance being a case in point. The church, as instituted by Jesus, serves purposes of teaching and fellowship for its members, but it's not a social club. Archbishop William Temple said, "The church is the only institution that exists primarily for the benefit of those who are not its members." When the church is truly the body of Christ, it offers healing and sound teaching to all with special care for those who suffer want or are pushed to the margins of society, regardless of their religious affiliation or lack of it. We saw this embodied in the ministry of the Sisters of Providence, who built what is now known as the Providence Heights Campus. When I came to Issaquah in 1982, Issaquah was a small town in which the largest employers were the school district and Dairy Gold. And retail outlets were so limited that if you wanted, if what you needed was not available at Ben Franklin or True Value, you pretty much had to go to Bellevue to shop. There was concern that the town was becoming a bedroom community from which people largely commuted elsewhere to work. So our city government focused on economic vitality. Now, there are lots of shopping opportunities here and quite a few large employers, but fewer and fewer of those who work here can afford to live here. I am pleased to see the council looking at how they might control housing affordability to serve the common good of our citizens, instead of favoring the interests of developers, real estate brokers, and companies that manage properties. I'm delighted that you are also looking at sites like Gibson Hall, which have value to the community that is greater than mere real estate, both for what it has been and for its ability to enrich the community at large now and for the future. What saddens me is that an even more awesome part of the history of our community and state is in danger of destruction because the value of Providence Heights, former campus of the Sisters of Providence, of Lutheran Bible Institute, and of Trinity College, has not been recognized by the city. It grieves me that the current owner, City Church, has missed many opportunities to use Providence Heights Campus to its full potential, to nourish the hungry, to house widows, orphans, and those facing economic challenges, and to promote a social order which welcomes and embraces all equally. Now it has asked permission to utterly destroy a sound campus, including over 200 units of housing, so as to allow Bricks and Homes LLC to put up 140 houses that won't be very affordable. They would tear down sound buildings when there are thousands of people in our county unable to find shelter fit for human habitation. There is still time for them to recall their purpose as the body of Christ, to repent and to withdraw that request for a demolition permit. I, for one, pray that they will do just that. I also pray that the City of Issaquah will move to save not just our significant cultural historical sites from needless destruction, but also extend a measure of protection to other structures that currently offer inexpensive housing, by requiring that when any now affordable housing is demolished, the redevelopment must include a matching number of equally affordable units.
Elizabeth, if you would summarize, please.
Otherwise, we will continue to move backward rather than forward in our efforts to have Issaquah be a place where people can live, play, and work. Work, play, and live. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
No one further has signed up to speak?
Is there it?
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I got up in Brooklyn at 2:30 this morning, uh, Seattle, or, Seattle or Issaquah time, so I'll make less sense than usual even. Homelessness in New York was pretty amazing, how little I saw. We walked six, seven miles every day, and I, in a few blocks in downtown Seattle, I would've seen more homeless people than I saw any day in my time in New York. We were all over many of the boroughs. The agenda on the, the field, um, I don't have, you know, I, I can understand why we're going for more, um, artificial turf fields in the Highlands, and we got an opportunity there to do that. We're putting a lot of extra money into that, and I'm hoping the council is considering what we need to do in the future for the rest of Issaquah. South Cove Area has no fields at all that are city. There's the state park. Talis has no fields, and Squawk Mountain in the downtown here area, Old Town, has waterlogged fields that are, been mostly unusable this spring because of the, the weather. I'm hoping real consideration is being given to how we can get some lighted artificial turf fields at Tibbetts Valley, which I think is a possibility now, given the improvements in the Tibbetts Creek Basin that have reduced flooding and siltation into the creek and hopefully not gonna see, let's say, Tibbetts Creek flowing across the fields at Tibbetts. So I hope you're considering that future and coming up with some good fields for the majority of the residents of Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else?
Steve Herrera, 170 Northeast Dogwood Street. Um, I'm gonna see if I learned from Tricia last time to do this correctly. My preamble, though, was that I was thinking of, uh, what would be appropriate literary reference to go with tonight's topic, which is Providence Heights preservation, and I was thinking that Shakespeare's Henry V, St. Christmas Day speech. It seems to be kind of a lost cause, and, uh, some folks have spoken tonight about it. Initially, it was proposed for a historic preservation, and a meeting was held and a threatened lawsuit caused that, uh, request to be, uh, put on hold. There were 102 of 105 letters that were submitted by various residents to, uh, the city staff requesting and indicating that it had historic, artistic, and cultural preservation attributes and should be maintained, so I, well, maybe there are not a lot of people here today speaking on it. What we're hoping to do today is both inform the council, the mayor, and the city, uh, through this televised presentation, that there is need to preserve this site, to buy time, to kind of engage the community as a whole in saying, there's something significant here, uh, worth saving. I think about the 20 missions that were started in California by Father Sarah Junipero, and that today are recognized as a historical landmark throughout, and city students are bussed to, to see those landmarks. What the city has proposed with an MDNS is to remove the stained glass windows and destroy the structures, when what historically happened can't be maintained just by the windows. It's the fact that something significant happened here that has historical precedence for not just Issaquah, but for the state as a whole and should be maintained. So the first part of this presentation is just what was reserved from the previous initial resolution of AB 7, I'm sorry, 7347, uh, the top- resolution of AB 7, I'm sorry, 7347, that talked about, and had an appendix, appendix B that does recognize and list Providence Heights Campus as likely having historical precedence or historical reasons why it should be maintained and saved. That was submitted before the initial determination of MDNS, but it seems like it's evidence of the fact that is now current that the city recognizes it does have significance. The later part of the documentation here talks about that's what I would like to see some changes made in city code that allows, when there is a structure that has potential for significance, to be maintained by the city, that that shouldn't be determined by the city staff, that should be determined by either city council or some resident body. And that's very much in line with the SEPA guidelines, as is highlighted in yellow. The next highlighted yellow section talks about that there could and should be a way that allows the city to administratively remove the MDNS pending recognition of it having the potential for historical references in guidelines with SEPA standing. So again, there were 102 of 105 letters written, supported the recognition of the site. So based on that, I'm asking that the one in the proposal that submitted that the guidelines be included, a reference to the site that talks about Issaquah's historical structures, I'd like revision of city, existing city code so that any structure that may have historical precedence has reviewed by a body of residents, if not the city council itself, and again, keeping with SEPA that the current MDNS that was approved be removed or put on hold, rather than just be handled administratively. Thank you. Oh, I guess I would add that many people have talked about, I think there's great purpose here for the city to either alternative housing or to look at repurposing the buildings for student use, and I think that sends a lesson to the students on what we value and what we would like them to value as future residents. Thank you.
Steve, thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak who has not signed up?
Hi, I'll be brief. My name is John Hillock. I'm the president of Issaquah Youth Football. I've been with the club for seven years now. We represent about 400 kids in the Issaquah community. I'm every fall out there playing cheerleaders and football players and everything else. Echo the comments from soccer. It's, we need the fields bad. I actually, I was looking at my email folder today, and I went back and I saw that I first started working on this project with the city four years ago next week, because I've been on all the citizen advisory committees and the bond committee, and there's been an incredible amount of work that the team from the city has done on this, and all the citizen action committees, and all the forums we've had, and all the input. And I know the discussion tonight is about coming up with more money for additional pieces that we really want to get on, that will really make this facility top-notch. I mean, if there's really critical pieces like the LED lights, the street widening, the mounted seating, all those things are just going to make this, instead of having a good field, a great field, a place that we can be really, really proud of when we go up there, and safe for the kids, which is the big thing, especially with street widening and some of the parking things we want to do. So just want to say I support it, and I know our whole community does, and if we had a bigger room, we could probably fill it with a lot of little kids who would jump up and down, and thank you. Thank you for all your work.
John, thank you very, very much. Anyone else this evening desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call. With that, audience comments are closed, and we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Mariah Patisse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The King Conservation District Board is meeting Wednesday, May 17th, at 4:00 p.m. in Renton. On the agenda is the new program of work and an introduction to the annual report. The Eastside Human Services Forum has been taking time to meet with different congressional leaders. They most recently have met with Representative Dave Reichert in his Issaquah office, and I was unable to attend, and Mary Lou Pauley very nicely stepped in, so she might have a report on that. But on the agenda in all of those meetings is healthcare that is affordable and accessible to all, maintaining current funding levels on community service block grants, and some other items that are part of the Eastside Human Services Forum legislative agenda. And I, it was talked about during public comments, which is wonderful, but I'm going to say it one more time. Martha from Humans, Human Services asked me to reach out and talk about this one more time. The Eastside Human Services Forum is hosting a conversation about the growing heroin and prescription opiate addiction problem. It's called Moving From Awareness to Action. It's Wednesday, June 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Old Redmond Schoolhouse Community Center. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 5th, also known to some of us as Cinco de Mayo, I attended the Special Eastside Transportation Forum with a few other folks from the city as well. That was hosted by King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci, and I mentioned this before at our last meeting, that there's concerns of all the construction projects and everything that's coming up in the next five years and the consternation that will cause. So that was a good laying out of all the information to everybody. There's handouts that Autumn was good enough to forward on to everybody on the council, so I suggest you take a look at those, get it, get that, get your head wrapped around it. There'll be a lot more to come. And again, on the RTC, I'll be continuing to work with folks on that to try to adjust that a little bit if we can. On the 10th, I attended the Emergency Management Advisory Council, and at that meeting, we passed the final budget for the federal grants that work on various preparedness projects. Just for information, that's a budget that has been going down since earlier, 15 years ago, it's been steadily decreasing this year. It stayed the same, so we had to continue to cut back some of the things a little bit, but at least it stayed level and didn't decrease this year. So we got some things on there. Coming up on the 17th this week is the Regional Transit Committee, which I'll be attending in King County Council chambers at 3:00. And there's three issues on that agenda, which we'll continue working on, is fares, adjustments, parking issues, and also the new community connections or alternative services, which it used to be called. And then on the 18th this week is the Infrastructure Committee meeting. And there's four items on the agenda there. None of them are action items, they're all informational and discussion. So those items are Newport Way, 900 to 54th, we'll be discussing that and sharing information along with the 2017 Complete Streets Program. And then we'll start further discussion on the Complete Streets policy as a whole, which we've been looking at a little bit also as a committee as a whole, done some work there. And then AB 7249 is continued discussion on the creation of the Transportation Mobility Board. So we'll continue to work on that issue. It'll be a while before we get it back to you, but we'll continue to work on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 4th, the Pugetstown Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board met, and the, we're continuing, the focus this month and the next coming six or seven months is going to be on the Regional Centers Frameworks update. The bulk of the conversation on the 4th was all about the military installations in the area, they, such as Joint Base Lewis McCord, the Everett and Bremerton Naval Shipyards. We do not, they do not plan under growth management, yet they represent quite a significant population and employment forces within the region. And so I would say that there seems to be quite a lot of interest and perhaps majority is support of expanding the Regional Centers Framework program to allow for these military installations in their nearby communities to actually be, to apply for and be competitive for funds for transportation improvements in their proximity. This would be a significant change to the Regional Centers Framework, because they do not plan for growth, they do not plan for employment, yet they represent significant employment. And so I think this is probably just the first of multiple conversations. There was no action, and we are many months away, you know, from any formal action, but I can tell you that my concern was, is that the pie sounded like it's just getting spread even further. And if we were to bring them into the fold in this planning organization, there would be no additional federal funds available for, for transportation as a result. So it's a serious issue that the region has to plan for, and I think we're going to be looking very seriously at making such an adjustment, but I think this will really have an impact Issaquah, so I'll continue to keep you updated as we move forward. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee met on Tuesday, May 9th. We took a look at two bills, Agenda Bill 7413, Eastside Fire and Rescue Interlocal Agreement, and Agenda Bill 7072, Central Park Pad Number One Construction. Both of those were recommended for passage and are on tonight's regular business. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met the next night at 7:00 p.m. in Renton City Hall. Amongst the things that we discussed, three stand prominent. The first is the Veteran and Human Services Levy. There is a proposed levy for this fall. The final shape of that document has not been writ. There's a question on, one of the areas of interest is around whether that should be expanded to include senior housing in specific beyond the two areas that are already covered. So I would encourage my fellow council members, when the PIC minutes come out, to take a look at that. We don't have an action yet planned for SCA in regards to a new Veteran and Human Services levy, other than ongoing discussion with the county about the best way for them to move that forward. The second is a cultural access sales tax, which is going to be moving forward for, I believe, an August vote. It is $67 million per year. For comparison, I believe the entire National Endowment of the Arts is something like $170 million per year, just to give you a comparison as to the magnitude of that. It is primarily Seattle-focused, however, there are four or five non-Seattle major arts organizations slated for that, and one of them is Village Theater, so Issaquah has a particular interest. Again, when the minutes come out on the PIC, please take a look, there is some, some complicated language in there, but there's an element that has to do with public, public school arts education. So it isn't just major institutions that would receive money out of that sales tax, sales tax if it is approved by the voters. Finally, regional centers were discussed. I appreciate Councilmember Winterstein's comments. I echo them. I have concerns that this is the wrong solution at the wrong time in search of a problem that doesn't exist, in terms of by changing the nature of the funding mechanisms that all of our cities rely on and planned for, but it sounds like Paul's doing a good job, and I know Hank Margeson from PIC is also representing SCA's concerns on GMPB going forward, so I feel, feel, feel well represented. King County Growth Management Planning Council will meet on Wednesday, May 31st, and the, it's been a long time, but the E911 Strategic Plan Scoping Leadership Group will meet on Thursday, June 20th. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the YRAT Management Committee meeting on May 2nd. We reviewed and recommended the 2018 Work Plan and Budget for Salmon Recovery Council consideration at the full meeting of May 18th. We also reviewed a draft letter sharing the recently approved YRAT Habitat Goals for the Cedar River, supporting inclusion of the Habitat Opportunity Areas in the Cedar River Corridor Plan Capital Investment Strategy, and emphasized what YRAT's interest in partnering with the district and implementation of multi-benefit projects for our constituents. And the next meeting will be May 18th. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 10th, I attended with the representatives from the Eastside Human Services Forum, the meeting with our Representative Reichert to discuss several items on the legislative agenda. We discussed his recent vote on the health care and emphasized and stressed the importance of making sure that health care will be affordable and access for all in Washington State. We talked about the Community Services Block Grant Program and the Food Assistance Program and Community Development Block Grants as well. Most of the asks were to maintain funding at current levels, not to reduce it, and some were to not convert from allocations to block, to block grants, because that, that caps things in a way that actually could harm Washington State, where we are one of the ones who very efficiently use our community block grant. We'd actually be capped at a level that would be hard for us to support. We asked our representative how we could best support him and his initiatives as well. It was a great discussion. We, I think we were at the offices for over an hour with he and his assistants, so it was a great opportunity. On May 11th, the Cascade Water Alliance's Resource Committee met. They had a discussion of a number of items related to the operation of the Lake Taps Reservoir, which is an asset that the agency purchased. There were two issues on, being discussed that had to do with King County. One was the county's intent to use, to have a water reuse program from the wastewater treatment plant, Brightwater. And the second item for discussion was a proposed franchise ordinance that the county wants to put in place. There are some, some effects to Issaquah in both of those, and so I'll be asking the administration for some input on how to work on those. On May 11th, we also had the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. Some of the items we discussed, there's an update to the Automatic Aid Agreement, there was a draft that was sent to the board and to our city representative as well, Jen Olson, and this will need to be signed by all the fire agencies, all the King County fire agencies. The second thing we discussed was a new protocol the Eastside Fire and Rescue put in place for a rare condition called adrenal insufficiency. And this was really interesting to hear about, because it was showing how proactive and innovative our fire department is in addressing these kinds of situations where we may have a very few individuals within the service area that have very, very specialized needs. And in this case, they actually write a protocol for that person and the condition that they have. So it was, it was really inspiring to hear how they're approaching that sort of treatment. We got an update that our financial audit should be completed in and around September of this year, and that will be for fiscal years 2014 and 15. The ILA extension, we got a status report on that, and it is actually on our regular business this evening, as Councilmember Martz said. We had an update on the water quality issues related to PFAS and connections to the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters property. There is still a draft map that has not been completed and issued, but other than that, there are no other deliverables expected from Eastside Fire and Rescue right now. And the strategies that were discussed and the options going forward are to continue to meet with the affected water purveyors, which would be Semamish Plateau Water and the city of Issaquah, and to continue to cooperate on the information sharing that's been going on. We had a discussion of a modification to the Advanced Life Support Program related to construction in Semamish, and I thought this was quite interesting. EFOR is implementing a mitigation program for supplemental services in the north part of Semamish due to the significant number of construction projects occurring simultaneously. This program for this area of their, this part of their service area will be in place from August 9th, from August of this year through February. And I think that's important, and it ties into what Councilmember Ramos said, we're going to have a confluence of projects happen over the next five years, both regionally, within our city and within our fire jurisdiction. And so items like this, coordinating services and making sure we still cover our service area is very, very important. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Fire Ground 101 Training is this Saturday, and it's an opportunity for electeds to go participate in fire training at the Bellevue Training Center. I think there's around 10 to 12 attending this year. I think there's around 10 to 12 attending this year. On Friday, May 19th, I'll be attending the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce meeting, which will be in the Eagle Room of City Hall. And on Wednesday, May 31st, Eastside Fire and Rescue's Finance and Administration Committee will be meeting at 12:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 4th, Land and Shore Committee met, and we had our regular moratorium update. We also continued our discussion of Agenda Bill 7215 and 7417, the Polygon Northwest proposal for using 100 TDRs in Issaquah Highlands and also some affordable housing. That's on our agenda tonight, public hearing. And because Land and Shore has asked to discuss that again in June, the recommended action tonight is to remand it back after the public hearing to Land and Shore to come back in June to the full council, and we will talk probably more about that a little later tonight. We also had our first of at least two meetings on Agenda Bill 7110, Windward-Bergsma Development Agreement. We also discussed Agenda Bill 7316, Sustainable Building Action Strategy, and that is coming back for additional discussion. Vertical Mixed Use Analysis, we had a discussion on that, and then that came subsequently to a work session. And then we had our first briefing on the end of development agreements regarding Issaquah Highlands and Talis, and the punchline is that the general way that the administration is going about thinking about zoning, which will have to, right now, the development agreements guide the zoning in those in those areas that are covered by the DAs. And so the DAs go away, that at the end of their lifespan, there isn't any underlying zoning. So the right now, what the administration is planning on is having the zoning match what's there, sort of mimic what's there. So the entitlements, underlying entitlements would be what's already on the land or what's already entitled to be on the land under the development agreements. And those, the process will continue this year, several public meetings. So the next Land and Shore meeting is the first Thursday of June. I don't think I have the date right in front of me, but it is 6:30 right here in council chambers, and the agenda has not yet been set. That's my report.
Thank you. We had four citizens speak this evening on Providence Heights, so I'd like to make a few general comments. Number one, there is no historic designation for the site. The city's Development Services Department, and not the city council, was bound to review the demolition request and make a determination under the current land use laws that have been adopted by the city. Even if the city council changed the property's historic designation now, it would not affect the vested demolition permit or resulting SEPA decision. SEPA provides a process for public input and for the city to make legally permissible mitigations or restrictions based on the public comment. In this case, the city did so by adding requirements to help ensure the preservation of the chapel windows at this time. So I hope that information is somewhat helpful. For the mayor's report, there will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NB and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. These items are expected to take approximately 60 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. Last week, we celebrated Municipal Clerks Week and honored Issaquah's clerks who provide a professional link between our citizens, the city council, and our city team and government agencies at all levels. Thank you, Tina Eggers and Tisha.
Caesar.
Somehow, Tisha, I have problems saying that, and I know the German pronunciation. For your excellent service to our community and the region. Finally, on May 9th, we broke ground on Issaquah's new skate park at Tibbetts Valley Park. We anticipate completing the project by late 2017. We had a wonderful turnout at the groundbreaking, which was attended by Councilmember Polly and Councilmember Ramos. They even got to throw a scoop of dirt up in the air. That concludes my report. We'll now move to the consent calendar. I would ask the clerk to please read that into the record after I ask if the accounts' payables have been reviewed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tisha?
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts' payables and payroll of May 15th. Items B and C seeks approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole council of April 25th in the regular meeting of May 1st. Item D, AB 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan Update, seeks referral to council Land and Shore Committee. Item E, AB 7424, Additional Board and Commission Appointments, seeks to confirm. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to move any item on the consent calendar to regular business force consideration? Council President Goodman.
I would move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries unanimously. Moving now to public hearing, the same rules that I presented under audience comments still prevail. The purpose of this public hearing is to jointly hear on Agenda Bills 7215 and Agenda Bills 7417, and we will open the public hearing at 8:18. We'll begin with an update from Keith Niven, our Director of Development Services and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council. So this is a continuation of the public hearing for Agenda Bill 7215, which is the ninth major amendment to the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, seeking to add 100 transferred development rights into the development agreement. But why we've connected it to Agenda Bill 7417 is these two items are actually linked together because of the proposed affordable housing that would be a component of those transferred development rights, and that's being done through, potentially through the Agenda Bill 7417, which is the first major amendment to the Washdott Development Agreement, and a separate new development agreement for affordable housing with Polygon Northwest. So I'm just going to summarize what the pieces are to this and then open it up for additional public comment. So should the city, so what are we talking about? Should the city approve 100 transferred development rights into Issaquah Highlands? With that is how many units are part of that conversation in total? Is there an infrastructure impact that has not been evaluated? Is the 10-10-10 okay? What that refers to is the affordable housing mix from the original Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, and should that be applied to these additional 100 TDRs? And then the fourth one is should the city agree to include Parcel D in the proposal? We own Parcel D right now, so that brings up a question of what's Parcel D worth? And then is there sufficient value in affordable housing to allow the city to deed Parcel D to Polygon at no additional cost? So those are the things that we've been talking about primarily at Land and Shore Committee. This is a map to help those of you who are not familiar with these properties understand where we're at. So this is Highland, this is Ninth Avenue right here, Highlands Drive. This is Discovery. This building down here is the hospital that's Swedish. This is, this big roof right here is Safeway. And so what Polygon has proposed is to have 39 housing units located, is it blue? In this blue area right next to West Highlands Park. So it's kind of at the far east edge of the property that they own, north of Swedish Hospital. And then Parcel D is located, this is Park Drive up here on the north, and this is 15th coming in. These are the apartment complex right there. This is College Drive right here, comes in and tees right into Parcel D. And then as this street moves down through Forest Ridge, this becomes Falls Drive. And this is about a 1.1 acre piece of property that we currently own. So how many units are we talking about? So Polygon purchased 265 housing units from the master developer of Issaquah Highlands Port Blakely Communities. What they're asking for is to add 100 units of transferred development rights, and then they are proposing to build 39 affordable units. And you can see those 39 are right here, and these other numbers are the allocation of the other entitlement and the TDRs that they currently own, including proposing 11 market rate units up here on Parcel D. And then the last slide I have is talking about the value of Parcel D. It's kind of over here on the left side. And then there was an analysis done by Arch on what the additional nine units are. So if you think about 30% of the 100 units are coming with this deal anyway, assuming it's a straight mirror of the development agreement, there's an additional nine that's being discussed. So those nine units, what are they worth in terms of the delta between being affordable and market? And then there's an additional adjustment because some of the units were brought down to a lower level of affordability. So that analysis was done by Arch and presented at Land and Shore last month. So that's what I've got for tonight. I'm going to put it back on the map because that might be easiest, but I'm open for questions if there are any at this time. Otherwise, I'll turn the mic over to public comment.
Are there questions of Keith at this time? Seeing none then, I would ask, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Mr. Morris, were you hoping to speak at this time?
No, I actually, I didn't quite understand the process, but basically I just represented the Issaquah Football Club side, so I was here to talk about the field.
Okay, so no one further has signed up to speak.
Is there anyone other than Dave Kepler? Who promised to make it short because he was in Brooklyn, New York earlier today?
David Kepler, again, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. This is pretty simple, straightforward. There's two documents referenced in the huge package of material you have, and there are the conservation easements, both for Park Point and for the 75 acres, 78 acres that on the, in the Highlands, on the north side of I-90. Both cases of the drafts are shown or referenced, and the actual recorded documents are out there, and I think they should be part of the packet rather than the drafts. I know we did, I'm not sure how much, I don't know if it means anything for this particular deal, but getting the record right is good, and because conservation easements will come in the future as we deal with trail issues and some of the other things going on, both at Park Point and especially at the Highlands area. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else desiring to speak? Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Third and final call. Seeing no one desiring to speak, a public hearing is closed at 8:00. I mean, excuse me. Council President Goodman.
Thank you. In order to take this next step here, I'm going to make a motion and move to continue the public hearing to the June 19, 2017 council meeting and remand Agenda Bill 7215 to the June 1, 2017 council Land and Shore Committee for additional review and recommendation, returning to the full council on June 19, 2017 for decision.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor referring a continuation of the public hearing to the dates mentioned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No opposed. Sorry, I said aye, but I was just raising my hand. I'm not a host. I said aye. I was too quick.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay, now moving to regular business, Agenda Bill 73.
Nope. I think we have to refer the second one, don't we?
There's two Agenda Bills.
Yeah, there's two of them.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would move to continue the public hearing to the June 19, 2017 council meeting and remand Agenda Bill 7417 to the June 1, 2017 council Land and Shore Committee for additional review and recommendation, returning to the full council on June 19, 2017.
Second?
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, and I thank Council President Goodman for keeping me on task this evening.
Welcome.
Moving now to regular business, first up, Agenda Bill 7325, State of the Judiciary Address, Judge Scott Stewart here for the presentation. Scott, it's interesting to see you on the other side of the dais.
You're sitting in my chair, yeah.
You sit in this chair.
What do you have to say for yourself?
I'm a little nervous at that. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, my name is Scott Stewart, and since 2007, it's been my honor to serve as the Issaquah Municipal Court Judge. As most of you know, because I'm the Issaquah Municipal Court Judge, I'm also the City of Snoqualmie Municipal Court Judge and the City of North Bend Municipal Court Judge, as both of those cities contract with the City of Issaquah, and we provide court services for them here as well. I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you primarily because that just gives folks an idea of where the court's going and what's going on with the court, although I do want to give you an idea of how our day goes as well as we go through the process. I'm here at the court now just about every day of the week, not full-time by any means. Tuesday, I mean, Monday afternoons, for instance, I'm only here for an hour, just for anybody over the weekend. Wednesdays is a regular day, but just about every day, maybe one day a week I'm not here, but I am sitting up there, not behind a Fred Butler sign, but behind a judge sign in that particular chair. We handle both criminal cases and infraction cases in the City of Issaquah. This gives you a breakdown of the cases, and there's been a slight decrease, although the the nature of the cases that are filed in our court have changed, and we'll see that with the next slide. This is the number of different folks that were charged with specific individual criminal offenses into the Issaquah Municipal Court, either out of the City of Issaquah, Snoqualmie, or North Bend in the three most recent years. This is a breakdown between last year and this year, and the most significant thing that I see, and the problem is I don't see this as a big picture when they're in front of me. I have individual people that come into my court, I know what they're charged with, I focus on them. But when I look at this, the thing that jumped out the most when these numbers were put together is that domestic violence arrests at least were up in 2016. I can't give you the reason for that, but it's a significant leap to go from 133 cases to 174 cases. Domestic violence is not a crime in and of itself. Any crime that involves domestic relationship is filed as a domestic violence charge. Most of these cases are assault domestic violence, harmful or offensive touchings between folks that have some type of a domestic relationship and/or malicious mischief domestic violence, but they also include violations of no contact order and other protection order type cases that are filed into our court, and those are up significantly. Most everything else kind of gets pushed aside by the domestic violence, but remained relatively constant. The assault malicious mischief that you see down here at the bottom are the cases that involve bar fights or fight in the park or something like that, didn't involve people that were related. But the other numbers are relatively consistent. I found it interesting that we had eight vehicle parallels in 2015. None were filed into the court. I included the number up there because it dropped to zero in 2016. So that's a crime that So that's a crime that at least went away for one year. Criminal non-traffic, the one that most folks are worried about is DUIs. DUIs dramatically reduced, at least by twenty-three cases in 2016 from 2015, the rest of them remained relatively constant. Up there in other, you've got crimes like allowing an unauthorized person to operate a motor vehicle, things like that. The largest crime in the state of Washington is driving license suspended in the third degree, which, and no valid operator's license, which still makes up the majority of what's filed into our court as well. That's an idea of the type of criminal cases that we see in this court. The hearings break down as follows, and these numbers, you'd have to add all the numbers up to get the total number of hearings that we have in our court, but to give you an idea, arraignment's the first court date, that's the court date where folks come in, they're initially charged, they enter plea of guilty or not guilty. At that point in time, I have to review their criminal history, I have to make a determination as to whether or not to release them and set conditions, or take them in custody. Release is what's presumed, and most of the nonviolent offenders and folks are released. Folks that end up being in custody are oftentimes folks that, when I see them, they're in custody, and they're in custody because either they have a violent history, or it's a tremendously violent event. Pre-trials, one of the goals of any court is to try to reduce the number of pre-trials, because pre-trials is the one court date that keeps getting set over. There's cost associated with that, there's time associated with that. We've been relatively successful. So that doesn't necessarily mean that we have less cases, it simply means that we're cutting back on the number of times where we're setting cases over constantly, and we're moving the case forward as much as we can. Motion dates are dates where you might have constitutional issues, motions to suppress evidence, things along those lines. Right now, we have a number of battles where folks are trying to get records, and other folks are fighting about the records. It's anytime the attorneys are fighting about something and want the court to resolve their issue before the case goes to trial. Readiness is the final hearing before trial, sentencing is for folks that have been convicted, and reviews. I want to talk just briefly about reviews. We do review calendars, what we call probation reviews, two Thursdays in the morning per month. And in this court, if you were here, and I know that Mayor Butler has actually come by and sat in the back of the courtroom, review hearings are the, are the cases where folks have been ordered to do something in lieu of going to jail, and they haven't done what they've been ordered to do. And this courtroom will be full. We'll have anywhere from sixty to eighty people on a calendar, and we're getting through them in the morning. They didn't do their alcohol drug treatment, they picked up a new criminal law violation, they tested positive for opiates or something like that, and I have to decide what to sanction them, whether or not we're going to continue with treatment, whether we're going to put them in jail, or something like that. But each of those 1,811 hearings represents a different person that's appeared at this court on a very large calendar, represented by counsel, and determining how we're going to treat them as they go through the process. And the review hearings are down, not significantly, down from last year, and close to where they were in 2014. We have a probation department. Before I get into this, I want to brag a little bit about my probation officer, so they don't forget. Ms. Vanek, in the last two years, she carries a caseload, we try to keep it around 100 cases. That's what's considered what's appropriate. Right now, she has 88. That doesn't represent her total caseload. We have 159 cases that are in warrant status. She's dealing with the most difficult clients that we deal with, because we put them on probation, we, it's a limited resource, we want that limited resource to be responsible for the most difficult cases. One of the things that Vanek has done, and I don't know how, if I can characterize this and get it across how, how significant it is, she's so good at closely monitoring these cases, within the last two years, she's actually caught two folks that were, essentially had become fake treatment agencies, were reporting to the court compliance with treatment. I would get these reports in court, the person's gone to all their treatment sessions, all of their random urinalysis has been negative, everything's going great. She's followed up on it, because something just didn't sit right, either the signatures didn't match, she called the agency, the agency said, "That guy never worked for me," or "That guy did used to work for me." She's followed it all the way through. One of the guys is facing felonies out in the other court, another one, I think it's still pending, but essentially, they're folks that perpetrated fraud on the court, they're ripping off the, the defendants are presumably folks that have alcohol or drug problems that aren't getting treatment, they're just paying somebody a chunk of dough to do false things, and it's all because Ms. Vanek caught it. I don't know any of the probation officers that's done that, she's done it twice, so I wanted to brag briefly about her, because that's been pretty amazing. Eighty-eight cases right now, this does not include cases where she has not seen them yet, so that means folks I've recently appointed for Ms. Vanek to see, and you can see what she sees. Forty-seven of them are DUIs, seventeen are domestic violence. Those numbers add up to eighty-eight. Twenty-seven folks with alcohol, significant alcohol problems, thirteen with significant drug problems, thirty-two with significant alcohol and drug problems, four with mental health issues, mental health and alcohol issues, mental health and drug issues, mental health, alcohol, and drug issues, she's got six. So we're dealing with a, a part of the population that needs that type of supervision, that's what Ms. Vanek has. You folks gave me Scott Trial, within the last two years. Scott Trial works in the courtroom as my court security officer, but he also helps with UAs, and that may seem like a strange thing for a court security officer to do, but one of the unfortunate realities that you discover when you become a municipal court judge is that people carry urine around on them, and, because we order random urinalysis, and when I have a female probation officer, and I send a male to provide a UA because I think they've been using, they go into the bathroom, she stands on the outside, and oftentimes, that urine comes back, and it's questionable as to whether or not it really came from that person's body. The existence of Scott Trial allows that to stop happening. So when you look at 2015 and 2016, if Scott Trial wasn't with me, those numbers would probably make it look like people were doing better, because they'd be able to provide fake urinalysis, which, I don't know how comfortable I am talking at a city council meeting about urine, but urine's part of, I, I tell my probation officer, it's one of the worst parts of my job, is I get to tell somebody to go take somebody else's urine, but I do. We're finding, the drugs we're finding, fourteen percent of the positive UAs have been methamphetamines, twelve percent folks THC. Obviously marijuana was legalized, but I order folks not to smoke marijuana. You commit a crime involves marijuana, you don't get to smoke marijuana anymore. Twelve percent of them continue to smoke it, they come back in front of me. Opioids is down to seven percent, which I think is down, we've been working really hard, especially with our young people with regard to opioids. We have a special calendar just to address them, and make sure they get into treatment quickly. And then alcohol is five percent. If you're not familiar with ETG, ETG is a tool that we're able to use with regard to folks that are using alcohol, that allows us to test over a longer period of time. If you just test them for alcohol, it burns off relatively quick, but if you're testing for ETG, you can tell when folks have used at a more distant time, so it's been very, very useful in ordering folks compliance with their orders. Civil cases? Civil cases are up, in 2014, we had 2149. Civil cases are infractions. 2015, 2176, 2016, 3,031. The top number are numbers where someone has actually seen a law enforcement officer, the lights come on behind them, they pull over, and they get to talk to the officer at the door. Below that is photo enforcement, those are also up, 2014, 6335, 2016, 8305. And this is just the breakdown, how they look on the graph with regard to the different numbers. We do get a limited number of parking tickets. A lot of those are called in by citizens that are complaining about the way someone's parked in the neighborhood, or up by the school. A limited number of non-traffic tickets. What those have typically been is enforcement of some of the business license type cases and stuff like that, they end up filing into our court, and we handle those as civil matters. And then you've got photo enforcement and traffic. And this is how the hearings are broken down. In 2014, we had 4,183 just flat out pay their ticket, it's up to 5571. This year, we had 652 actual contested hearings where people challenged their ticket, up from 565 and 478 last year. Not committed is at 76. These numbers, this, this 98, 74, and 76 not committed are actually kind of, I don't know, there's a couple of King County officers, and a couple in Washington State Patrol officers that file their tickets into our court for some reason, and so what will happen, so I would say probably maybe a third of those folks are situations where someone ends up in front of me, they've got an attorney, they say, "Your Honor, I would point to you where this ticket occurred, it occurred on 520." You know, 520 might as well be Mexico. I mean, I have no jurisdiction over 520, but the Washington State Trooper has filed it into my court, so the case gets dismissed. So that number probably as far as, is not consistent with the reality with regard to the not committed. And then these are the mitigation calendars that we have across the bottom, those are folks that have asked for reduction in their ticket, or community service based upon their economic circumstances. I'm going fast, I was worried about the five-minute thing, so.
You have two minutes left, Scott.
I was a high school debater, I can get it done. Ms. Campo did a user survey in 2016, you may remember, we did one in 2013. A lot of courts were doing them, we were interested in how we compared to other courts. We did a survey about three years ago, and our survey results came out that we were as well or better than any other court out there, as far as the way folks felt about our court. The biggest complaint was parking, but as far as the court itself, we did very well. We're not familiar with whether anybody else has redone a survey, but we decided to do it, see whether or not we improved, and we did. Our scores ranged from zero to five for the survey, the results showed an improvement essentially in every category. The one I'm most proud of, the third one down, we got a 4.84 out of five in how my staff treats folks with respect and courtesy by court staff. And I sit back there and listen to them, if you ever get a chance to go over, the, the four folks that work in that office are tremendously polite, they do an amazing job avoiding giving legal advice, because everybody wants legal advice, but they tell them what's going on, they provide the information, everyone's a ma'am, everyone's a sir, it's something we can be very proud of. The lowest score was a 4.24, that had to do with our website, folks didn't like our website, and then some other ones, feel safe in the courthouse, 4.77, and, and you can just read those on down, I don't want to just read what's simply on the board. But all of our numbers went up, and our numbers were better than other folks, so I'm pretty proud of that. In 2017, all of the staff was involved in court, staff training, both for ethics, understanding the impact of bias, bias is a big deal in the legal community right now, working on bias issues, court security, and Department of Licensing issues, we did the court survey, we revamped our jury summons and selection process, brought it more in-house, saved money, cut back on some of the unnecessary expenses, modified our bench warrant policies and procedures, again, brought more of it in-house, simplified our forms, and a number of our staff have been asked to go out to other courts to help the other courts develop their systems, to try to get their systems more efficient, and it work in, more the way Ms. Campo has our system working. This is about Ms. Campo. As you may know, or you probably don't know, she's the Chair of the Limited Jurisdiction Case Management System Project. The case management system that we use in our courts, the computer system that sits in front of all of the judges, sits in front of the clerks, was developed, I think, in 1992, and it works like it was developed in 1992, and they've got funding. She's actually involved in pretty much all of the judicial information system, has to do with the funding to help improve it, the technology system, and the conference committee is all the things that she's active in. This is something we need to be the most proud of. Every year, they award a court administrator, and there's hundreds of them, a president's award for the best, the most, the recognized court administrator of the year, there's been one court administrator that's gotten it twice, that's Ms. Campo, and she received it this last year. So my court administrator has been the president's award winner twice, I'm pretty darn proud of that. And this is just me. I continue, I teach at Issaquah High School every week, and judges in the classroom, I think I've seen a couple of you up there. I'm on the education committee this past year at the Fall Conference, which is what all the district municipal court judges are required to attend. I presented on prosecutorial misconduct and ineffective assistance to counsel, essentially what judges are supposed to do when you're on the bench, and you realize that the attorneys in front of you have just fallen apart, and I have an obligation to protect the system, to protect the record, to protect the defendant, to protect the city, what I can do. At the annual conference, which is with the Supreme Court judges, I worked on the procedural fairness and changes in the DUI law. For the second time, I was selected by the Washington State Bar Association to present the Judicial Demeanor section of the training with regard to the pro temp judges, and along those lines, I also was sent to San Diego to be involved in the Advanced Bench Skills and Procedural Fairness Program. And in 2017, I'm still at Issaquah High School, it's a very popular, you call a class "street law" at a high school level, and people line up, it's a lineup to get into it, it's a very popular class up there. I'm doing civility and procedural fairness, similar to the pro temp training, but this time to judges, evidence-based treatment and sentencing alternatives for addicts, primarily dealing with opiate issue. At the annual conference, the, I enjoy it, because the, the judges that are, the Supreme Court judges and Superior Court judges are constantly looking for things that the, the lower court judges to do, and they sure they gave us masking, which is a, the federal government concerned with hiding traffic tickets from the record, and so we're going to, I get to help the folks learn about that. And I was, just put on the Judicial College faculty, so I'll, I get to start, judges have to go to judge college, and I'm on the faculty there with regard to sentencing and probation. And I know I talk fast, but I know, you said you had an hour meeting or something, so I figured, I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions at all?
Are there questions? Tola.
Two, two separate questions. First is, I'd like to request from Mayor Butler and Council President Goodman, that we consider for next year, perhaps, having a presentation, maybe not the judge, but somebody from the judge's office, presented services to go through these numbers with a little, a little bit more detail, because, you know, the number's gone, I, as, as the committee that deals with public safety, I think we might want to spend a little bit more time. Now, having said that, and keeping brief, I did have a question, it seems like infractions may be up, but I was struck by generally how violent, violent crime, like criminal non-traffic, almost everything is down.
You bet.
And down considerably. Was there a change in jurisdiction, or, I mean, it's, it's really noticeable, with the exception unfortunately of domestic violence, which is, which is unfortunately higher, and every other category were down like 20 to 40 percent. It's marked.
And, and I would say that there's probably a lot of things that figure into that, or, you know, obviously, I'd like to take some credit for it. We, we, we had some, we had some, what I would call, folks that I'd recognize on the street, probably ten or fifteen young folks, we developed, we called a young people calendar initially, and then we changed it to a high-risk calendar, where what, what happens with, with criminal defendants when they're, when they're sentenced, especially folks that have been in the system for a long time, you sentence somebody on January the first, and, which wouldn't be a court date, but you sentence someone the first of the month, and they're ordered to go get an alcohol-drug evaluation, and so they go, and you set a review hearing out 30 days, so the next court date's February the first. What happens on February the first is they come in on February the first, and they have called the day before and scheduled the alcohol-drug evaluation, so now you set it over till March the first. And when they show up on March the first, they got the evaluation on February 28th, so now you set it over till April the first, and you can literally stretch it out. So what we started doing, especially with young folks, especially folks that were involved in the opiate type, type things where you were, and you had a lot of crime that was related to that, is we created this calendar where rather than setting them out 30 days, we were literally bringing them in this high-risk calendar, and we still do, it's 11 o'clock on Tuesdays. So what happens on Tuesdays is typically I have a very small calendar, oftentimes it's in custody, they're just left over from Monday, and then at, at 11 o'clock, I can bring them in. And it, we, we had some success, some of those folks literally dropped out of the system. One of my favorite stories is a gal that I saw in court constantly, and then I didn't see her anymore, and the next time I saw her, she was working at the fast food restaurant, having a job, telling me she's paying her rent and stuff. I'm not saying that's everything that happened, but I think that there was some success, just because rather than taking four months to get folks into treatment, we were taking two weeks to get them into treatment, and maybe a month. And sometimes, what would happen is you'd give them an instant sanction, so rather than a month, nothing happens, and you set them over a month, another month, nothing happens, set them over another month, nothing happens, set them over another month, nothing happens, give them 30 days in jail, you set it over two weeks, nothing happens, you set it over another two weeks, then you give them a day in jail, you make it immediate, two weeks later, they've followed through, because there's a, there's a sanctions fed. And that's kind of the, the process that we fit, and I think it's had some effect, but I'm not going to take full credit for it, I mean, there, there's lots of factors that figure into it.
Thank you very much.
But you're right, I'm the wrong, I, whenever I, with Ms. Campo, I sit down, I go, I don't, it's not that I don't pay attention to the numbers, I walk in on a calendar, and I look down, and I think, oh my gosh, there's 84 people on my review calendar, but you, you look at the individual stories, and every person that's there in a domestic violence review is there typically with the victim, who's there either speaking for or no contact or against no contact, or, and if you really want to chat about what I do, that's what I like to talk about, but I can't talk about individual cases and stuff, obviously, so. Anything else?
Other questions or comments? Judge, great presentation, you did whip right through it, but...
That's what I do.
And Lynn, our court administrator, congratulations on the President Award for 2016, and I don't know what year the first one was, but I would just say, this court is creative, and has been a tremendous resource in dealing with the homelessness, drug abuse, and mental illness problems that our community had, and you, you've done a lot to reduce those numbers pretty significantly, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving now to Agenda Bill 7072, Central Pad Number One Construction. Jennifer Fink is approaching the lectern for a presentation. And then this is coming back to us from Services and Safety.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Fink, park planner for the city. Before I get started on Agenda Bill 7072 for Central Park Pad One Construction, I first wanted to share a bit of good news with council. Hopefully tomorrow, the fences will be down at Confluence Park, and the bridge will be open. So just wanted to share that with everyone. And I apologize in advance for those of you who were in attendance at Services and Safety. This may be a little bit of a repeat presentation for you, but I'll try and go quickly and touch on the items that were highlighted in the staff report within the Agenda Bill. I'll give a brief description of kind of the project layout, how we bid the project, the various components, what the staff recommendation was, and then open it up for discussions, because I may end up answering some questions as we go. The bids for the Central Park Pad One project were open on April 26. We received two bids. Soon after the opening, one bid did withdraw due to a calculation error. As we reviewed the bids, we started looking that had the bid been complete, the bids we received would have been roughly $127,000 within each other, or roughly 4.83 percent. The reason I mention this is it's somewhat important as we look at some of the options available to us as we, for awarding the bid. Teradynatics is the apparent low bidder with a submitted bid of $2,771,120. Some of the options presented within the Agenda Bill also include rejecting the bid. We have the option to reject the bid and rebid immediately. We also have an option to reject the bid and bid sometime in the future. However, as we looked at the bids that we received and did some further analysis, we feel that awarding the bid and perhaps a combination of alternatives, either all of the alternatives or none of the alternatives are more viable options than rejection. But before I dive into some of the project details, I think we should take a step back, look at what the current market is doing, construction market in Seattle. It doesn't take a genius to look around downtown Seattle, see how many cranes are up and moving. Seattle's been the forerunner in leading the national average for construction indexes recently, averaging for the Q1 of 2017, 3.5 to 4 percent higher than the region a year ago. Mortenson Index is also projecting up to a 4 percent increase for the next 12 months as well. So while we're seeing bids within 4 percent of each other, we're also facing potential increases of 4 percent if we're going out to bid, again, at a future date. In addition to some of the current market conditions, there's also site conditions that played a factor into some of the bids. Some of you may know that Central Park was used as a fill site during the construction of the Issaquah Highlands. The quality of the soils on that flat ground run a gamut of depth and are somewhat questionable. This was evident in the geotechnical report that was part of the bid package. When we look at some of the bid analysis, we see that the base bid showed the most variant for both contractors from engineers estimate. We're thinking some of that uncertainty had to do with some of the unknowns with the soil out there and the potential, and if they had to hit some unsuitable soils, what might happen there. So as we looked at both the current conditions with the big climate, site conditions, staff, as we were crunching numbers, really felt that rebidding wasn't the best option if the intent was to try and get lower bids, given market. In talking to some of our neighboring communities on the east side, they too have been seeing bids coming in 10 to 20 percent higher than engineers' estimates. And ours came in right around 15 percent higher than engineers' estimate. As you recall, last December, during budget deliberations, there was concerns that some of the, the project costs were increasing, and we're still in early design phase. Staff introduced a proposal to phase Pad One, which in lieu of constructing the expanded parking lot, was using the interim, the Public Works Operations Site, which is currently paved and across the street from the Pad One site. During that approach, we knew that wasn't going to address all of our funding needs at that time. We'd identified about $415,000 of what we thought were alternates at that time, but we knew we'd probably be coming back to ask for additional funds. Instead of awarding, council decided to, let's wait, and not fund any additional funds at that time. And once we got real bid numbers, then take a look at the project as to how we wanted to proceed. After we had gone through, finished the design and the permitting process. Unlike most construction bids, like say for the skate park, for example, when we go out to bid, the contractor's doing all the work and purchasing all the material. In this project, we did the phasing a little bit differently. The city will actually be investing in some items themselves, they won't be supplied by the contractor. And this was an avenue to help, we as staff pursued as far as trying to maintain quality, do price control. By purchasing these items, they weren't experiencing contractor markup or potential substitution after the construction award had already been bid. Some of these items are like the artificial turf and the lighting, lighting, field lighting, whether or not we do the metal halide or the LED lighting. We'd be looking at entering into an agreement and purchasing, well, we already have an agreement with the King County Directors Association, also known as KCDA, which is a cooperative agency. They contract out and vet all the projects, all the vendors and materials and supplies. And since we have an interlocal agreement, and we've had a standing agreement with them since 1997, we're able to purchase materials directly from them and get the benefit of the cost without the exposure to contractor markup. In addition, we'd also need to work with PSE. We'd need to get a new transformer set in order to support the field lighting. And for the interim parking lot, as we investigated the costs on that, there's no electricity directly to the site, and set it, pulling new power to the site would be very costly. And we're entering into an agreement with Intulite, which allows us to basically rent light standards for that area. It's a temporary use, and once the larger expanded parking lot is corrected, we can decommission those without a terrible expense, as we would if we were setting new service to the site. Now, as far as what the contractor bid on, they bid on the base bid, which was the construction of the fields. Again, we'd be providing the artificial turf and the lighting as materials for the work. But they also bid on the, as you might recall, the site plan here. They bid on the four different alternates. The first one was the safety improvements, which were, is along this stretch of road here, and it's widening the parking two feet to allow for safer vehicular passage. Right now, the parking stalls are six foot wide. This would be moving the curb to an eight-foot parking stall width along that area. This was in reaction, this was added as a part of the project in reaction to public comment received throughout the design process. Alternate number two is the addition of the picnic shelter up here. This is probably the least impactful of all items to come back and do at a future date. However, this is also in reaction to public comment, because the existing picnic shelter is so heavily used, they felt it would be a nice amenity for the site. Bid alternate number three for the contractor was site amenities, which included trash cans, soccer goals, scoreboard, padding for the backstop, bike racks, and a few other items. And then alternate number four includes, is a little more graphic and functional, and this, it's this mound here, which, as we went out to public comment during the design, we heard from, people were really saddened to think that this was going to be a fenced-off field that they could no longer access. And we worked with our landscape architect, Dave Andrews, to come up with the solution of creating this mound to help prevent balls and also provide some safety. But we were able to remove the fence from here, all the way up into here, to allow more public open access. So when you're approaching from the existing parking lot, which is here, or in the playground areas, this feels like an open field, that if it's not in use, you could go walk out on, go fly a kite and do other things. So this mound, the alternate, includes the addition of some of these other seat walls and the plantings in there. Again, to come back and do this bid alternate item would be a little more costly at a future date, just because of the, how you'd construct the mound and the walls at the same time. So those are the four items that the contractor bid on. Utilizing the apparent low bid from Teradynatics, the project is, currently has a funding gap of $1,888,550, as stated in the Agenda Bill. This also assumes, if you recall, last December, and during budget deliberations, what the available funding was at this time, which was $3.73 million. Moving forward with that request of $1,888,000 and change, it's important to note that about $340,000 of is contingency, and the contingency is based upon 15 percent of the contractor's base bid, as well as the road improvement works along Central Park Lane. Because those two elements during construction pose a lot of unknowns when you start digging, and what's really happening out there in proximity to utilities, and so on and so forth. Though we're asking for an additional $1 million for the Central Park project, I do want to remind council that by no means does this finish Central Park by any means. There's still Pad Four, which came out of the site development plan process and other park improvements, bike park, other lighting, and restroom facilities and things that are needed up here. So you will see those in future capital requests. So as we worked with both finance and administration on how we're going to fund this project, two primary sources were identified. One, which we spoke of last December, was the park mitigation funds. And the other available funding source would be general fund. And on page six of the staff report in your packet are the funding options. And due to the complexities of the bid setup and other items like contingency sales tax that get added into them, it was a little cumbersome to try and come up with a very clean presentation of all the potential alternates. So what we did is we took the extreme approach. If the project were to be funded fully with general fund revenue, the $1 million, what this would look like. Option number two was if we used $1 million out of the park mitigation funding. And then we kind of saw those as two bookends of the funding, and we'll walk through this here in a moment. And then the other third option is really in between those two bookends, you could select any book or series of books to help make up your package for the design. So assuming that we need, our current, if we look at bookend one, the full project using general revenue sources, our current project revenue is the 3.73 million. The general fund revenue we'd request for this project is 1 million, just over 1 million. And in working with the finance department, the estimated fund balance currently for the general revenue fund is 16 million. Pending other budget amendments that council has, we'd also deduct another 900, almost 900,000, less the Central Park need, we'd be looking at a revised ending fund balance of just over 14 million dollars, if you were to fund the million with the general revenue. Now, if we took the same picture, looking at the park mitigation revenue, we have the same project cost, but the estimated fund balance for 2017 currently is the 3.4 million in the park mitigation. If we used 1 million of that for this project, we'd end up with a revised ending fund balance of about 2.3 million. Now, as, of course, here, we can pick a book or any book, series of books or bid alternates between those bookends. And, you know, given the project balance, we'd, you could divide the funding sources, you could provide a myriad of bid alternates. It's really up to you as to what you'd want to do. And then the general fund revenue and the park mitigation revenue would be, ending fund balances would be altered accordingly. As staff, we looked at some of the complexities within this project and thought of, you know, this is a park bond project. The way to address the community needs, we really felt that funding, our recommendation would be to fund the whole project utilizing the general fund. This does a number of things. It fulfills our park bond obligation. It also addresses the community desire for the LED lighting upgrades, functionality with the parking, the additional picnic shelter. It also maximizes the field use by adding over 2,000 hours of playable field time, which, given the winter we've had, is a lot of time. And I know it's been a concern as to whether or not to move forward with this project, since the park strategic plan has not been updated. We feel it's beneficial to move forward and complete this project in its entirety, so we can focus on new projects that would arise out of the park strategic planning effort. And utilizing general fund also preserves park mitigation fee, or the park mitigation fund, in order to approach and address those current and future projects that would arise out of the park strategic plan. Utilizing the general fund, you can see what this does to a complete and balanced fund package. The City of Issaquah Park mitigation fund currently has, is giving $1 million to this project, and that's 21 percent of the project total. The 2013 park bond is giving 32 percent of the project total. We have various grants that are giving 24 percent of the project total. And the general fund would be just over 1 million, and that would be roughly 23 percent. There's a small little yellow sliver here, and that is a thank you to the Issaquah Soccer Club for their donation of $5,000 to this project. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
For the sake of the larger council, I'll ask one of the same questions I asked in committee, which is if you could talk about that ending fund balance in regards to city fiscal policy?
I have someone here who I think can answer that question all the better than I. Jennifer, would you?
This time, I won't be surprising her with a question, unlike when we were in committee.
With regards to fiscal policy, currently, the City of Issaquah financial policy includes reserves where a minimum of 8% of budgeted expenditures need to be set aside, up to a maximum of 15%. Currently, the 2017 budget is identifying ending fund balance to be over 40%. And so with, there are some pending budget amendments that you have not seen yet, but they are pending, coming to you at a June council meeting date. But with this additional proposed budget amendment, that would bring us down to an ending fund balance of approximately 32%. Keeping in mind that the ending fund balance, from a budgeted perspective, can be fluid based on council budget amendments, but approximately 32%, so that is well over the council financial policy with regards to the min and maximum of what's required for reserves.
Thank you very much.
No?
I have some questions on how the lighting works. It's pretty clear to me, the four bid alternates, they're just laid out, there's alternates, but the lighting is option, it's not an alternate. And following the numbers, I expect to be about $90,000 increase for LED, which I love. But, you know, trying to follow that when I get down into the budget, purchasing equipment, it only shows 477,000. So I assume that's, you know, I'm making some assumptions here, so tell me exactly how the lighting cost works.
In the base bid, we have the LED lighting, or excuse me, the metal halide lighting. In this alternate here, the total cost to add the LED lighting has the metal halide in it, so collectively, it's like 700,000, I think, for all of the lighting. Is that correct, Dave? Hang on here.
The purchase from KCDC shows 477,000.
Right. Bear with me just a moment, let me get my... So let's see here. So what that is, the 477,000 there, is the metal halide with the LED upgrade. So that is the correct amount of the 477,000 for the project elements.
So that's a purchase of materials?
Yes, but the increase over the metal halide is only 92,000.
If we drop back, that would drop back to, you know, that minus 92,000, right?
Correct.
And the construction of putting in the lighting is basically the same, whether it's lights, it's lights, but the 92,000 difference. And that's just a purchase, and the installation is included in the base bid?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, this is coming back from the Services Safety Committee. Tola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 9, 2017, Parks and Recreation Director Jeff Watling gave the Council Services and Safety Committee a presentation on the Central Park Pad One project, Exhibit C. The presentation focused on the memo provided to the committee detailing the bid summary, project summary, funding options, and recommendation. Following the staff presentation, public comment was held. After discussion, the committee recommended two to zero, awarding the base bid and bid alternates one through four to TerraDynamics, Inc. He also recommended including the LED lighting option, authorizing an additional $1,885,550, Funding Option One, from the general fund to the Central Park Pad One project. So I would like to move to award the Central Park Pad Number One construction contract for the base bid and bid alternates one through four for Central Park Pad One to TerraDynamics, Inc., in the amount of $271,120, including sales tax, and direct the finance director to include $1,885,500 for the Central Park Pad One project in a subsequent 2017 budget amendment utilizing general funds. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but as I read that, I'm not sure it includes the halide lighting. It says base bid and bid alternates one through four, but the halide lighting was separate?
You mean the LED lighting?
Sorry, LED lighting.
LED.
In the way that it was worded in the earlier section, I just want to make sure that the bid, I'm sure the dollar amounts are correct, but I want to make sure that the motion that I make fits with what we intend, what at least the committee intended to do moving forward.
The LED is to be in that.
Excuse me?
I believe the LED is to be in that.
Included.
Is in the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You're right. It's not. Okay.
Got to write in option one.
All right, well then, then I've made the motion.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. Official discussion or questions? Mary Lou?
I just have some comments to share. So I am supporting this tonight, and I wanted to thank Jen for the agenda bill. I found this very easy to understand, and we asked for you to bid this in a more complicated way than normal, so thank you. So my comments are, a couple of real big pluses for our parks department. I do think they're amazing at leveraging grant opportunities, going out and finding the money and leveraging that, and that's why we get to build a lot of the stuff that we get to do. Also, the community outreach that you've done on these specific projects has been good. When I've been to community meetings where the Parks Department has been talking about a project, you really listen, and you really react to what you hear in the meeting room, and that's fantastic. Why I was so concerned with this at budget time goes back to the discussion about our first Parks Recreational Open Space and Trail Plan, PROST, and the strategic plan that you're working on now. And the concern I've always had is that when we take a scope of a project and change it as we go along, and we're talking to a small group of the community, I mean, a piece of it, we are not then using our lens of, are we equitably building and improving all the parks in the city? Because we don't have a list of what, where our other deficiencies and needs are, we can add a scope to a project and add money and pay for it, and we don't know what we're not getting. And I'm not sure that we can even just do that tonight, because we haven't finished the strategic plan process. That was the reason why at budget I wanted it brought back with alternates, and so if we were not in a healthy financial position like we are now, where we could use general fund, I wouldn't support this at all. But I do support it, and I support it with the general fund. I believe we need to protect that mitigation fund and build it till we figure out what the priorities are for parks in the rest of the town, and remember that we collected that money from construction projects, and it is supposed to be used in all neighborhoods that are requiring, that can have capacity improvements. And so we have to be careful not to focus on just two parks, just Central Park and just Confluence. We have a much bigger system than that, and we need to make sure we're equitable throughout our community. So I'm in support of it tonight. I think the agenda bill was really well done, and I think on a project-specific basis, our Parks Department does a great job in listening to their community, so.
Ryan?
Other questions or discussion?
I would like to make a clarifying question or a statement real quick. Tola, to answer your question about the LED lights in the motion, that term is not in the motion, but it should be included in the motion. The dollar amounts do include the LED lights, though, that are presented in the motion, the 1 million, so it should be the base bid and the option one, and the four alternates.
So I would like to amend my motion, I would like to move to amend my motion, to change the language to, "Construction contract for the base bid and LED lighting and bid estimates one through four."
Second?
Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Tola?
So I'll speak back to the main motion. So, you know, we thought long and hard about this, acting before the new PROST, Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Plan is back, because we also were concerned, we want to make sure that we have that document to guide our general policy on parks. We felt that time and time again, these well-drained fields get so much use, they're so critical to both kids and adults in the community and their recreation, that it affords sort of a special place. And we knew that we, I mean, one way or the other, we're going to want to build these fields, they're so central to so many folks around the city. So we felt it was a safe bet to assume that even if we had the new PROST plan in place, that we would not be not building this. So we decided that we wanted to move forward, and while there were a couple of the pieces of the bid alternates that might have been able to wait, most of them had additional costs associated with them if they were to wait, so we decided to put that all in. And then finally, the issue around general fund versus parks mitigation, we felt that there's a fundamental question around, sort of for the Long-Term Finance Committee, about why we have a general fund that's quite so high. If our target is a floor of 8% and a nominal of 15%, and we're at 40% at the moment, it's a good problem to have, I get, but it's also, there's also probably something in there that deserves further attention. But with outstanding changes that are coming down the pike, plus this additional money is having the general fund go to 32%, because this was also a one-time cost, you know, we've talked many times, I don't know if I want to call it the Winterstein criteria, but the idea that general fund money shouldn't be used for long-term financial, I think it's actually probably older than just Paul's enthusiasm for it, but, you know, for many years, we've talked about how we only want to take out of the general fund for very, for specific individual uses and not for systemic issues, and this is certainly an individual use, so it met that criteria. So for all those reasons, I supported it, committee.
No?
So I want to compliment the park staff for all the work they've done, keeping us informed along the way, so this came to us without any surprises. We knew this was going to be more than we thought. So that process was really good, and I appreciate that. And this is a park we want, and I support getting these fields in and using LED lighting. But I have some big concerns, and one of those is we really have one bid. You know, that always bothers me when you only really have one bid. And you're asking for 1.1 more million dollars. Yes, there's money in the general fund, but right now, I know a lot of people that are talking to me about all the other things we want to do in Issaquah. We have a Providence Point traffic light, we have traffic enforcement, other development enforcement, we have just bike and pedestrian safety, roads, traffic, the big thing. So there's a lot of things that I want to look at, and we normally look at those things in the budget. When we balance those out, if I remember the last budget negotiation, we were down to 10,000, arguing about $10,000 here or there, and all of a sudden, 1.1 million comes, and it's like, yes, it's a good thing we want it, but, you know, how's that balance with everything else? So the strategic part of this additional funding is, I'm very concerned about. We've done this a couple of times this year, you know, Confluence Bridge, $400,000, which I heard from a lot of my constituents, they were very upset with projects creeping up in scope and in caliber and those kinds of things. And some people read me the riot act, I'll tell you bluntly. We've spent more money on Trader Joe's, three trails. We've been putting out 400,000 at a pop, pretty easy for a lot of things. They're all good things. We want them all. My problem is, we're not doing it strategically, as some of the things that you said. So I don't know what I'm trading off here. And yes, we have a nice general fund balance right now. That doesn't mean you just go spend it, because this is the next project that comes up when we happen to have the money with us, and the next project doesn't. Now, we're sitting pretty good, but there's a lot of things on the list of things we want to do, particularly in the traffic and other mode and other parks. So I'm feeling like I want the field, and I want the lights, and that gets us pretty high right there, that's 650,000 increase, but we put those four alternates in there for a reason, so we could look at them. And that's about, you know, when you take the contingency in, there's about 450,000. We could reduce this by, build the field and the lights, and then those items could go back into next year's budget, and they could compete with everything else in a fair way, strategically balanced, when then we could know, hey, we're looking at doing this or doing that, and we can balance that. Where here, we have no comparison. It's just like, yes, we want it, but we don't really have money that's going to go on forever. So I guess I'd like to propose an amendment. The amendment would be to fund, I propose, we fund the base bid with the LED lights of the general fund, but not the four alternates.
Second?
Point of order question.
Yeah.
Paul?
Oh, it's a point of order, is that question, is that a, really a amendment? That sounded like an alternative motion. It didn't mention amending the motion on the floor. I just want clarity.
So either it needs to be an amendment to the motion, or the motion would need to be voted on and a new motion made, or the motion could be withdrawn and a new motion made, so it could happen a few different ways.
Okay. Let me clarify then. Thank you. I would like to amend the motion, and I'll read the whole thing, but I would just take out the bid alternates one through four. So all would remain the same, base bid, the new piece we added back in, option one would be there, but take out the bid alternatives one through four.
So read...
And then the dollar amount would have to change there, and again, also.
So read the amendment.
Read it, okay. Award the Central Park Pad Number One construction contract for the base bid, and the wording An option LED lighting for Central Park Pad One to TerraDynamics, Inc., in the amount of $2,771,120, including sales tax, and direct finance director to include, now this number's going to change, I don't know the exact number on my math, but it's approximately $653,000, in the Central Park Pad Number One project in a subsequent, in subsequent to 2017 budget amendment utilizing general funds.
Second? Are you done?
Yeah.
The amendment to the amended motion is to delete bid alternatives one through four, a summary of the amendment. Discussion on the proposed amendment. Mary Lou? Followed by Paul.
Question for Jen, I guess. When we were talking about it in budget session, and we were talking about whether or not to do halide lighting or LED lighting, there was a lot of concern about redoing it twice, so, you know, installing something and then ripping it out. These alternates that Councilmember Ramos pulled out, they are all on a different part of the site than the sports field itself. So is there still the same concern, like, is there any kind of overlap here, or could it be phased so that lights and field at one time, and without going back into the same footprint, could you do all the rest of the items that he suggested at a later date?
Alternate one, the road widening, could be done at an alternate date, however, it would be a substantial disruption. We'll already be doing construction on-site, doing that work at the same time would mean less disruption in the future. But the road widening, yes, it could be done at a future time, however, it could be also more expensive to remobilize.
Because you pull it out.
Because you do it out, and then you have time and materials and time to do the work, and then you have a whole new mobilization for someone to come out on-site. The picnic shelter, as stated earlier, is probably the easiest of all the items to pull out and do at a separate date. It's the least impactful, it's an isolated area, that alone would be the best. The amenities and site furnishings, those are soccer goals, bike racks, things that are required by permit, things that allow the use and enjoyment of the fields, portable mounds, but they could be purchased at a future date.
I just want to say, I mean, it's going to be hard to play soccer if you've got no goals.
True.
It's going to be hard to play baseball if you don't have a...
It's going to be hard to play baseball if you don't have a mound.
True.
So, I mean, while they were separated out from the bid, they're an integral part of the overall use of the field, so just got to be cognizant of that. Otherwise, they could go, we could go a very long time, and the associations will just have to pick up the cost if they want to use that.
And the fourth?
Yeah, alternate number four, the walls and mounds. Some of the mounding work would be done innately as part of the base bid. The additional walls that would be used as seating, those would be much more expensive to come back and do at a future date. Again, another mobilization, further disruption close to the sports field use. Cost-effectiveness would be better to do it now than at a future date during the construction.
Thank you.
Paul?
I think there was maybe a problem with the motion, the amendment on the floor, because I think, Bill, you said the total amount of $2.7 million, which actually included all four bid alternatives. You said 277,71, but the base bid is 2335.
The alternate is 4356.
Yeah, but you said that amount. You said, I think you said 2.7. Yeah, I'm getting in.
You're right.
So, we got that to deal with, a little house cleaning to deal with. I'm going to ask this question in a slightly different way. So, when I go back and review the budget deliberations from last year, the original proposal from the administration was for an additional roughly $1.1 million from mitigation. Council cut that out, said no. Now, you're coming back with basic, almost the same amount, and yet, and yet, the bid proposal came in higher than the engineer's estimate. So, if you, could you, could you help me understand that?
Certainly.
Where it's really back to the original amount you asked for in the fall, and yet, the bid is high.
Well, the original million that was requested last fall also included the expanded parking lot, which is no longer part-
Okay.
-of the project. So, we had pared it down to the 415 of the bid alternates.
Okay.
In looking at, let me find my notes here. In looking at the... Try and find it here. The bids themselves, it was 400... The majority of the cost increase for this over the engineer's estimate was in the base bid, and that was roughly 500, and, trying to find it here, 500 and some thousand. The base, or the alternates, their bid price was only 137,000 more. Trying to find the numbers here.
You may have answered the question in that the proposal in the fall included everything which we eventually called the alternatives.
Right.
And, but what's not in the one in front of us today is the full parking vision.
Correct.
Now, we don't have a line on it for how much that cost, but maybe that amount is... So, that, I was looking for some kind of general description, and how did we get to the same number even though, you know, it was, it came in high? And it's because the scope is less because parking's not in it, I think is the answer.
Right. It's a lot of the, but also some of the construction costs, materials have increased, sign of the times with the higher market and construction costs right now. Materials are at a premium, contractor availabilities at a premium, costs are just innately increasing. So, a lot of it was seen in the base. There was 500,000 was our initial overrun. There's 100 and some thousand, 30,000, give or take, in the add-alternates. So, from 415,000 to roughly 537, I think it was. And then we also have our contingency, which is in that as well, which gets us back up to that million dollars where we were.
Okay, so, okay, so, the current amended, amended motion is to not include the street widening, or the parking widening of two feet, not build a picnic shelter, the other amenities, which frankly, I thank you, I thank you, City Administrator, for the clarification. I don't know, I don't know how they're-
I'm sorry?
I don't know how they're not part of the original cost. That's nonsensical to me. And I will say that the mounding in the walls, it seems like the, that seems like an amenity per the design that really is kind of, I want to use the word core, but it seems essential to the, kind of, the overall operation and use of the, you know, facility for spectator. But also, I did like the way you described it as allowing us to not fence the entire area and make it more, you know, more accessible. And so, I really do appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Ramos', way of pointing that out, you know, 300,000 there, 400,000 there. I think that's a very important, as far as from the general fund, I think that's a very important way to think about this. We have to, we're not seeing them all in total. We're kind of 400,000 ourselves to death, so to speak. But, and so, but I do, last fall, when we did consider, we talked about all of these. And so, I am going to hearken back to the fall, when we said, break them out, you don't have the million dollars for mitigation, get the bid alternatives. And, and at that time, you know, that, I agree with you. It was like, let's see, can we slice some of these off? And I think what's proposed, if I go back to then, I think we, you know, we considered them, we weighed them against the rest of the budget, and, and we didn't approve it. And so, and we said, come back and prove, you know, that you can price them differently. And we didn't get that. We, they're basically, they did eat up the original proposed budget along, without getting the parking. So, I'm really struggling here because I feel that all of these are justified, especially the mounding, and I think, and the amenities. But I agree that, you know, we, that, you know, this, we're not getting a chance to look at these in context of other, a full budget consideration. So, I'm a little bit torn. It's kind of more of a ramble, I realize, but I'm a little bit torn on which way to go.
Mariah?
So, I just wanted to speak to the, to the alternates and the options, and then I'll have more to say when we get back to the original motion. In terms of the alternates, I think to Councilmember Ramos', comments, when I was looking at this, going back to it for the first time, I really did focus in on the LED lighting. We had a lot of, a lot of community engagement around that issue, and a lot of public comments about what the other lights would mean in that area. And I think that that is very important. So, when looking through there, that was my first focus as well. But after sitting and going through everything on safety and services, I would say that a lot of the other pieces of this became, I think, really important. And we're going forward, we're doing construction, we'll have the park under construction. And so, the first alternate, the Central Park lane widening, would be something that would already be under construction. I think that that would be hard to go back and do, and then have the park go through construction again. I've said this before, but I'll reiterate this, is that I definitely, you know, from a community perspective, I think that this is so important, the park in general, and having more space for everyone to come and play. But I am a mom who has been up there in the rain, in the dark, with kids darting to-and-fro, and soccer balls and lacrosse balls flying. And when you're trying to get into those really small lanes, and all parking spots, and all of the kids are out there, it really, it does raise a safety concern. And so, I would be a proponent of that. The picnic shelter, I would just say that overall, we're trying to create this amazing community space. And when you're out there in tournaments all day long, parents and kids and the teams need a place to sit and rest. And the amenities, that was one of the questions that I brought up, and then we ran through what they were. It's the soccer goals, the portable mounds, the backstops, the wall padding. So, it's difficult to go forward with this and then not have those sorts of amenities. The mounding and the plantings, as we talked this through on safety and services, it really, to me, was part of the design. It's the part of the design of having that open area, and so, that was really difficult for me to pull out. Again, I'll speak to some of the other reasons when we get back to the main motion, but I just wanted to share my feelings after going through this and talking this through on safety and services. And I'm still in support of, I would not be in support of the amendment for that reason.
Stacy?
Thank you. So, Bill, I appreciate your thoughts on concern about spending. It's, struggled with that, with several projects. I have a little bit of a different take on why I wouldn't support it, however, in just doing the lights and not the alternates. I'm still a little confused why we're calling them alternates, if the project won't work without them, however. I'm not quite sure how we can call them alternates. But I think the effect of putting, of doing part of the project and doing the LED lighting, but not including something as important as parking widening, for example, is that then you have the lighting to increase the programming, and all of the use, and all of the additional people, and all of the cars, but then you don't have, you don't get something as significant as parking widening. We have had recently, and there's a growing concern in the Highlands, about speeding through the neighborhood and whether we need to put in some permanent safety measures such as speed humps. I believe that movement is going to be coming before us very soon from more than one neighborhood. But I see a significant problem in upgrading a park and having the lighting so that you can have all the programming, carry into the night, all of the cars, but none of the safety aspects that you get with parking widening. And then, if you're going to go that far, you know, just the picnic shelter and the other amenities, I think are, when you're talking about this much, the size of a project, then I think that's, you know, I don't want to say it's pennies on the dollar, but it becomes relatively insignificant. I think what we, so I'm just going to speak to the amendment right now, and then I have some other comments. So, for those reasons, I wouldn't support it, Bill, but it's not, it's not that I don't appreciate the fact, the underlying premise of why you raised it.
Paula?
I view these alternates in two different categories. I think that some of them are essential if you're going to build the facility, and some of them are not essential. And so, I consider alternate one, the road safety improvements essential. I think six-foot parking is not appropriate when you've got kids getting out of cars on a regular basis. I think there may be other places in the Highlands where six feet is fine, but this is not one of those locations, so I want to see it go to eight. I think also the mound walls and plantings, particularly the mound walls are going to, would be a big hassle to put in later. So, I consider alternates one and four essential. I totally get why you want to be careful and measure twice and cut once. And I do, I appreciate the administration putting together these alternates. I think two and three could potentially be done later. But because I consider one and four essential, I will not be supporting the amendment.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
One more.
Oh, sorry, Alene.
I just want to concur also, as looking through this, I think all of these, the one through four are important. If we need to, and if we want to, I think the picnic shelters would be the one item that I could agree to remove. But how can you possibly move forward with this project without having the proper mounding for your pitchers and your catchers? And the parking widening, to be really honest, when this development happened up there, and they came in with six-foot parking spaces, that should have never happened to begin with. And we've lived with it for many years, so this would be a nice opportunity for us to correct that. But if we put this off, there's no way we can put this off without the cost of materials going up and the labor going up. And so, we need to move forward with this project and bring it together.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Paul, and then Mary Lou.
I just want clarification. Are we, are we discussing an amendment? And then we're going to have a second, we're going to vote on amendment, and then vote on the, possibly a re-amended amended motion?
That's, right now, we are voting on Bill's amendment.
Which is simply to remove the alternatives?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Mary Lou?
So, I feel like I owe Councilmember Ramos explanation, since I seconded his, but I'm not supporting it. I think at this point in time with the community, the expectation has been set that what we're going to do up there is give them something that's fully functioning. I 100% agree with you that it's a lot more money than we ever thought it was going to be, and that we struggled with it in the fall when we didn't think we had the money. My primary purpose back in the fall was to protect the mitigation fund. And if at that point in time, staff had been able to present a proposal where potentially those parking improvements were coming from a road fund, and if they could have pieced it together then, I probably would have considered it. For me, the killer was that it was the mitigation fund. And I have a big concern now that, having talked about it and looked at it in detail that we have, how disappointed that community up there would be with us to do part of it. So, I'm not going to support the amendment to the motion, but I think the rationale that you put on the table should be what we use going forward. No more of this. This is, we have to plan how we're going to do our parks projects differently, and we have to use our strategic parks plan to do it, so that we know what we're comparing to, what our priority is, and what we're not getting when we spend more money on something else. So, I think you're bang on with what you said, but I do think it would be too much of a devastation for the community up there to get part of what they expect is coming. So, I'm going to not support the motion.
Bill?
So, point of order. Can I withdraw the amendment?
Of course.
Of course. So, before I do that, I just want to say, I really appreciate the discussion. I wanted that discussion to happen, because I really want us to consciously say what we're doing with money and why. The bid alternates really aren't alternates, except for the picnic shelter. So, it's kind of, we kind of fool ourselves and lull ourselves into something that we could go without, because it's not a whole project. But it's now triple what the park bond set it for. And we just, it's a lot of money, and I have to answer to people that are going to be very upset that we're going to 1 million, and now another $1.1 million. And we had to have this discussion. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your second. So, we could have the discussion, and I withdraw my amendment.
I'm assuming the second are-
I completely disagree. No. I agree.
So, we are back to the amended motion, discussion on the amended, the original amended motion. Paul?
Okay, here's a detail. Jen, the, in the project elements, the, thanks for the explanation on the into lights. I think I captured that those were temporary. I assume then that that's just now an ongoing cost until we actually, some point uncertain in the future, did something about parking, maybe.
Correct.
Okay, and so, and so, what, tell me, what is, what is that, those like, light stanchions on wheels, you know, what are they, what are we talking about?
They're standard 15-foot parking lot lights, but rather than setting a new service, we're tapping into existing PSE service. So, we're renting the electricity from them at a rate. And so, instead of, you know, putting new electricity at that site, and then we can keep the light standards, and we can disable the, and reuse those light standards at the new parking lot, and we didn't have to pay for a new utility service at the Public Works operations site.
Okay, so, we would be looking at a reoccurring yearly expense until the long term?
It would be monthly, and it would be billed and paid out of operating.
Okay, and then, so along those same lines, so we never, this, this line item for the artificial turf itself, for us buying it from KCDA, that was always part of the plan? I remember that being described before. I remember that being described before. So, so, okay. You're telling me it was, that was, we've always laid it out this way?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that in any other previous documentation. Okay. All right, thank you.
Additional questions or discussion? Stacy?
Thank you. So I am going to support the Agenda Bill and I thank you for all the detail, I really appreciate that. I, I'm still concerned about, I think what happened with this, with this, is this got away from us a long time ago in the beginning. And I'm, I'm, I don't do project planning, so I don't know what happened. But I think too many times now, we've had projects that we roll out the ideas that we're going to, in good faith, great efforts, go to the public and we take all of that comment back. And perhaps somewhere along the line, we need to remember that we don't just have a blank check. I don't know how you, I don't know how we do that better because I don't know what the process is, but it's happened too many times. I do agree with the comments that have been made about, you know, we're this far, doesn't mean that I'm happy that we're spending this money. We've got the mitigation fund, we've got the park strategic plan that's, that's coming soon. And I think to pull it now and start all over is just not, is just not wise. But it doesn't mean that I, that I support it without some concern about how we got here. But the community's excited and I, and I say that, it's an odd thing for me to say because I live in the Highlands and so you'd think I'd just be like, yay, I can't wait. But I don't represent the Highlands, I represent the city of Issaquah. I represent everybody. And, you know, it's all of us who have to answer to all of the people who live here and all of the people who work here and all of the people who have an interest here. And so whether it's in my neighborhood or any one of your neighborhoods where you live, I think we have to be good stewards of our money and we are fiduciaries, we sit here as fiduciaries. And it's something that we all take seriously. So while I think it's a great amenity and it's going to be a great amenity for the Highlands and for the city, it's, it's, it's been a little bit troubling how we got to this point with this price tag.
Mariah?
So I just, when, when we first started to look at this, it was just really tough to, to think about the fact that we only had the one bid and we, and we had the bid withdraw. And, and, but in talking through the fact that going out for bid again would potentially bring that in higher or much higher, then having to look at, at both the general fund and the park mitigation fund, but having the alternates of the bookends and, and coming up with maybe something in between, we really had to think about all of that. But we, we definitely had talked back in budgeting about really not wanting to, and I had talked about not wanting to touch the park mitigation funds. And, and I, it would be great if we had the strategic plan for the parks together so we could look at, look at this more holistically, but we're, but we're not there yet. And I think with the, looking at the, the ending fund balance for the general fund and seeing that that was healthy and talking about the fact that this would be a one-time type of project brought me to the place where, where I wanted to support this project, so.
Paul?
Yeah, so this actually is a very exciting project. The idea for us to create a really a world-class outdoor recreational amenity for youths and their families and really for people of all ages. And, and the place, the fact that we have a location for it, that it, that it's, that we're creating an opportunity and fitting it within a neighborhood, I know there was concerns about the lights. I really respect everybody who spoke about lighting and I, I have to accept the testimony of the experts that this LED lighting option is actually going to minimize the impact in the nearby neighborhoods. And I, and I hope indeed that that is, that is the case. And I'm, I also like the fact that we got some pushback that really the roadway was, should be fixed by transportation funds. Personally, I always felt this is a park project. We are kind of, we're redoing something that was done earlier, that's unfortunate, it's not efficient. I mean, this is a good, a good example of having to go back and redo something and we know how much it costs more the second time, it's somewhat of a reminder. So for the, for all of those reasons, I'm going to support this as well. And I want to also, at the same time, echo what, what Stacy said earlier is in that we saw it actually, and this is going to be hard to mention, with the skate park where we, we took the idea to the public and everybody said, we want all these wonderful things. And, and this kind of happened the same way. And I, there is definitely a process. I think I would like to see parks go forward with kind of managing the, how the expectations and making sure that the options are better and their costs are better understood when we do, do the, the public process. Because if nobody's putting any limit on what you can spend, people are going to want quite a bit, which is natural, I understand that. But that's part of what needs, needs to be improved. And I think along with Confluence Park and now this park, I think these were the two that had master site plans that go back quite a ways. And I'm not aware of any other kind of park potential project that's out there that is, that has that type of basis, has that kind of vesting like this does. So like my other colleagues have said on the council, now the next, we're going, now we're getting to the point where, you know, with a complete citywide, you know, strategic plan, capital plan on parks, we can assess all potential projects within that context. And I'm glad we're to that point. But this, I think, closes the door on those kind of vested projects.
Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm voting for this project tonight, I've already said that. My comment though has to do with the next phases and it's, this was a cautionary tale to me of just what, what could happen with a local project if, if it grows in scope. But my, my bigger concern, and I think it applies to both Confluence Park and Central Park, has to do with what comes in the future and those impacts that it has. So we heard from the soccer clubs tonight, that was great, there was a lot of other sports clubs that weren't here. But if Issaquah's considering expanding parks to become regional facilities, that's a really big discussion that has to happen with the community. Because a community park with a community draw is one thing. A regional facility in the middle of a neighborhood and the parking requirements and traffic requirements for that is something entirely different. So for future phases, I guess my comment is, we need to be talking about where we want those regional attractions in town and, and, and that should be something we should take into account. Otherwise, we can end up, again, looking at parking needs way in excess of what we're providing, so. But I'm completely in support of what you're doing tonight and thank you for all your hard work.
Paula?
Just a couple of quick comments. I, I want to thank this, the staff for putting together these alternates the way they were. I think if, if we were in really tough financial straits, I think we would want these options and we might exercise, we might have exercised some of them. Even at the expense of not being whole on the, on the project, if, you know, we, we really wanted to be super careful last fall and so I know it was a bit of a bitter pill for the administration to have to go back and not get a yes from us. And so I feel a lot better today and, and some of that is, is from the information that was provided. So I appreciate that. The other thing I want to mention is, I think I heard a question around the LED lighting and I wanted to, I wanted to communicate forward, one of the things we heard in committee, which was we had, one of the people who was in attendance was actually, did a lot of the facilities design work for the University of Washington. And he said they're in the process right now of retrofitting all their lights to LED because it's such, so much better of a, so much better for users and neighborhoods. And he was, so he was, wanted to convey that to us and that that is just the, the direction that everybody's going in because it's so much better.
It looks like you are ready to act. All those in favor of awarding the Central Park Pad One construction contract for the base bid and LED lights and bid alternates one through four for Central Park Pad One to TerraDynamics as further described in the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7347, Landmarking Gilman Town Hall Building. Kristin Leeson is still here. This is coming back to all of you from the Committee of the Whole Council and Kristin, for the staff report if you would.
I will. Sorry, I just banged the heck out of my knee when she talked.
Well, we can move to the next one if...
It's okay, I just, I just had to regather myself for a second. Good evening. So as I was just mentioning, this was introduced to you on the April 25th Committee of the Whole Council. The purpose is to ask you to approve moving forward with the nomination of Gilman Town Hall as a local Issaquah landmark. You may recall it was built in 1888, it was our original town hall, it is in its original location. It was also used as a fire station, a police station, a polling hall, a school, a library, and from 1930 to 1972, it was used as a residential purpose until it was purchased by the city. So we still own it, which is why you would be asked to move, to allow us to move forward with the nomination. It is actually the Issaquah Historical Museums, whose administrative offices are housed here and part of the museum is housed here, who is requesting this nomination. If we were to do this, the intent is to preserve the building. We, if it were landmarked, then Issaquah Historical Museums and the city could receive grant funding to do the maintenance, which the city currently pays for, and it could also pay for some restoration work that needs to be done particularly on the facade of the building. Issaquah Historical Museums applied for a grant to hire a consultant to do the nomination form. Last week, they received a $7,500 grant to do this. And they are asking the city to pay, once the nomination is done, they are asking the city to pay $1,500 application fee to King County for the application process. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Stacy?
Sure. I'd make a motion to direct the administration to proceed with the landmark nomination of the Gilman Town Hall Building and partial application fee of $1,500 to the Issaquah Landmarking Commission.
Second? Any discussion or questions? Seeing none then, all those in favor of directing the administration to proceed with the landmark nomination of the Gilman Town Hall Building and partial application fee of 1,500 bucks to the Issaquah Landmarking Commission signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Wow, that was quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
She's in pain.
Are you okay?
Emergency medical service.
Oh, lucky for you, we have somebody in front of you.
Yeah, lucky for you.
Our next item under regular business, Agenda Bill 7413, Eastside Fire and Rescue Interlocal Agreement. This is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee, Jennifer Olson, for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Butler, City Council members. The city provides fire services to the community by partnering with others through the Eastside Fire and Rescue. The interlocal agreement that's in place was crafted and adopted in 1999 and has been amended over time. The, the board of, EFOR board has proposed amendments to the existing ILA. Those include extending the current ILA to December 31st, 2026, and, which is a five-year extension, and then subsequent extensions would be in 10-year intervals instead of seven. The next proposed amendment would change the partner opt-out notice from one year to three years. So this would give partners, the existing partners, more time for potential increases in their financial commitment. And the final amendment proposes to change the funding formula from four years, reducing it to two years. So this change keeps the cost sharing current and aligns with a biennial budget cycle. Chief Clark is here, if you have any questions. The Services and Safety Committee did discuss this particular item and it was unanimous that these proposed amendments be considered by the City Council. And the administration also recommends approval of the adopted amendments. So with that, I would be happy to answer any further questions of the council.
Are there questions of Jennifer? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 9th, 2017, the Council Services and Safety Committee met to review Agenda Bill 7413. The administration made a brief presentation to the committee on the proposed ILA amendments. Chief Clark was present to answer questions to the committee. All other ILA partners have adopted the amendments as presented. The committee unanimously recommended approval, three to zero, of the proposed amendments to the Eastside Fire and Rescue Interlocal Agreement. This item, we recommend it be placed under regular business, which here we are. So I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the amendment to the Eastside Fire and Rescue Interlocal Agreement.
Second?
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Seeing none, Paul?
It, I find it, it's, it's remarkable that we're considering these changes. It wasn't that many years ago when there was a lot of talk around here about, about the effectiveness of the partnership, of the, of being in partner with, with the others, with the fire districts and the other cities in, in part of EFOR. Just when we negotiated the ILA, the last time we did the full renegotiation of the ILA, there was a lot of, lot of turmoil within some of the members at that time. And, and in just a few short years, this is, I think, for the, here the administration to see us, express your support for extending the term to 10 years. I know that that was sought and previously and it represents an opportunity for stability and longer, longer-term planning that is good for the partnership. So it was something I've, I supported when the first, when it first came up a couple of years ago, I understood that. But I know now that to hear that the administration as well also is in support for this longer term, I think speaks really broadly and really well about the overall health of the partnership, is our role in this partnership with the other parties and just the overall execution and, and faith in the leadership of, of EFOR. So I think it's just remarkable that we've got here in this short period of time. I think there's some, some of the other changes are, are also, I think, for the good of the partnership, three years notice if you're going to withdraw. There was very, there was a lot of turmoil a couple of years ago when there was the threat of, of a withdrawal and we had just one year to try to work through those issues. So again, I think that's better for the stability of the, of the partnership. So, so quite a bit has improved and the fact that it's got to this point tonight, I thank all that were involved with identifying these issues, championing these changes and bringing them forward. You know who you are, so thank you very much for those. I'm going to, I'm glad to, I'm glad to support this this evening.
Stacy?
I'll support it as well. I've been part of the EFOR board before and also was around when the initial joining of the partnership happened and watched it happen. So that's been, what, 20, almost 20?
15.
15, 1999, so 18.
15.
So my memory's not that bad yet. So, and I want to, I just want to make a very clear statement about how much I appreciate your extraordinary leadership, Chief Clark. I, I know that there are many factors. I think that your leadership is a significant one and I think that's one of the primary reasons that we are here considering this today. So thank you.
Mary Lou?
And just a plus one to what Stacy said. This is fantastic that this is where we are and we are the fifth partner to do this tonight and so it's all done and it's a great place to be. Looking forward to a great future and with a longer planning window that we're going to have, great things are to come. So thank you very much.
Seeing no one else raising their hand, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the amendment, amendment to the Eastside Fire and Rescue Interlocal Agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Chief, thanks for sticking around. We'll now move to good of the order.
Yes.
Paula?
I'll, I'll, I'll mention one. You all know I'm a history buff. So earlier tonight, somebody mentioned someone important out of Western US history and I just wanted to clarify, they're referring to Saint Unipero Sera, Apostle of California. So it's Unipero Sera and he, he built nine missions in California, running all the way, pardon me, from San Diego to San Francisco, including Mission, Mission Santa Clara de pardon me, from San Diego to San Francisco, including Mission, Mission Santa Clara de Assise, which is, of course, the mission that my daughter passes every day at Santa Clara University, which is on, it's on campus at Santa Clara University. Saint Unipero is also the patron saint of Hispanic Americans, so I just thought I'd make sure that his, his name is remembered clearly. And anybody who's driven down there, of course, the 880 freeway is also the Unipero Serra Highway.
Well, thank you for that history lesson. Paula? Mary Lou?
And just a, a couple of quick dates, since we're not having another meeting this month. The Community Awards will be May 16th at the Hilton Garden Inn at 5:30. Also, if council members haven't heard, the Issaquah Schools Foundation Breakfast is this Wednesday, May 17th, at the Eastford Church. Eastside Fire and Rescue Fireground is on this, this Saturday, May 20th. And the Confluence Park ribbon cutting, I can't remember if the mayor mentioned this or not.
I did not.
Is, I have the time.
25th.
10:00 a.m. on the 25th. And Sammamish State Park.
Date again?
25th.
25th, 10:00 a.m.
May 25th, 10:00 a.m. And the Sammamish State Park ribbon cutting in Issaquah, gosh, I don't have the date for that either. It's coming up, it's a 5:00 p.m. one. I'll have to find that and send it out. But there's a ribbon cutting at the park as well, for the new beach.
Okay. We'll now take a, a short 10-minute break, and then move into executive session at...
20 after.
20 after. We are back following our recess. We'll now move into executive session. It's being held this evening for the purpose of discussing property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1B, and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1I. These items are expected to take approximately 15 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. With that, we will now move into executive session at 10:22. We are back in regular session. Our executive session has concluded. It was extended a number of times for a total of 35 minutes. Is there any other business to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, we are adjourned.